Okay, good evening and welcome to the Eastline Board of Education for May 20th, 2019. This is a regularly scheduled meeting. I would like to follow the meeting order. And for everyone who can rise, please rise and join me in the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, good. Oh, okay, great. So, every year, we have an opportunity to put forward to the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education nominees for student leadership awards. And this year, we have two students from high school that are receiving leadership awards. And Jeff, you want to take over some?
Absolutely. Yeah, it's an honor. Really, I'm going to kind of turn it over to our high school principal, Mr. Susie, who's going to bring our two high school students forward first. And then I think our middle school students are...
One's here.
One's here. Okay. So we'll hold off until our second one gets here, but we'll start with our high school. And then both myself, Candace Carlson, and Sheldon, we'll come up and present the award after your initial remarks.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Every year, like Christian said, we recognize two of our leaders in our community and have the pleasure to introduce them to you today. First, I want to bring up Sophia Rogers. So I have a statement to hear that our council's got to have in the same, so I'm just going to share it with you for a few minutes. So Sophia Rogers greets Eastline High School with the maturity, academic prowess, and her most magnetic personality. She has not only been at the forefront of her school's community or participating in such diverse activities, but she has been a role model and leader to many in the Eastline and Salem community as a whole. Not to mention, and this comes from the councils, not to mention she makes the best chocolate chip cookies in the world and is filled with gratitude and appreciates it before the run. I think getting those chocolate cookies is slightly important. Within our school buildings is high honors students and a part of our first four lites, our HOSA, which is our medical club, Project Dove, Key Club, Hiking Vikings, Drama Club, Makers Club, Science Look at, Project Change, and has been a Chinese student ambassador during the summer. Her accolades within these organizations include winning second place in the first aid competition for HOSA, earning the title of head of the life department for our drama program, and being voted best ambassador by our exchange students. This National Honor Society, Spanish National Honor Society, and varsity tennis members, most valuable recognized role model within Eastline High School are in both marching band, color guard, and peers reaching out. Sophia is the section leader and color guard captain of the Eastline Viking marching band. She helps through our practices and always performs with a smile on her face, helping to keep the Viking pride alive at sporting events and band competitions. Since her sophomore year, she has been a part of the peers reaching out, that's our pro group. Pro is a service club at our school that is devoted to easing the transition to high school. Club runs annually, club runs annual freshman orientation as well as facilitates tours for new students to the district. Members of this club are also responsible for being the liaison between the peers and support staff for the school in tackling difficulties both within the school building and outside of it. This club encapsulates who Sophia is. And in order to be asked to be in this club, a student needs multiple teacher recommendations. Outside of the school walls, Sophia was nominated to attend the Hugh O'Brien Leadership Conference, a three-day conference designed to prepare students to turn their ideas and goals into reality. Sophia has also supervised and directed second and third grade students at a summer music school and art camp, and was an assistant class instructor at the Salem Public Laboratory to teach students about 3D printing. She is no stranger to volunteer work. She has assisted at the Special Olympics, our annual art show, and countless activities that are associated with her experience as a Girl Scout. Sophia has earned a Silver Award as a Girl Scout and has been vice president and treasurer of her local venture group of co-ed division of the Boys Scout. It seems impossible to allocate minutes of the day to all that Sophia Rogers can accomplish, but it is apparent she is up to the challenge as she maintains extreme academic success. It is with great pleasure that I introduce Sophia Rogers to you as our cave leadership award recipient. Next, let's call Julia Walker. You've probably heard Julia's name a few times. Let's see if you've read the sign.
Yeah.
Her name's Agger, which is unbelievable. First line is, you may have heard of Julia Walker's name from the past year. She was recently written about in The Daymaker regarding her tenacity and passion for politics in journalism. Julia Walker attended a march of our lives last year after the incident with Hartman shaped her outlook on today's political forecast. Her journalism teacher reported that during Julia's push for inclusion at press tent, she caught the eye of Rolling Stones reporter Matt Olson and Hartman author Dave Cullen. Cullen took Julia under his wing that afternoon as he worked his way through the masses to uncover the story. Hartman was released in February, and Julia had such an impact on that, he decided he dedicated several pages to narrating her story that day of the march. Matt Olson included Julia's experience in a Rolling Stone article, and closed his story by describing Julia's moxie as she navigated her way into the press tent and reported on the event. Since that event, Julia has ferociously involved herself in the world of journalism by covering stories about fake moves and evolving roles of women and minorities at The New York Times. In our school building, Julia's been a member of the Key Club, is the treasurer, treasurer of Women in STEM and Workforce Club, the fundraising manager of the Eastline Rotary Club, and has founded our model United Nations club. She's a valued member of our varsity fence team and cross-country teams as and is a force in our drama and music pilgrimage. She has been a member of a cappella groups and played various roles in our plays and musicals. The news section editor of The Viking Saga has won five academic awards, including the New England Press Association's Highest Achievement Journalism Award and American Legion of School Award. She has honed in on our leadership skills by attending the Hugh O'Brien Leadership Conference that Amherst Writing Program kept, focused on nonfiction and descriptive writing, the three-week-long Camp Azon Leadership Program, and the Rotary Youth Leadership Awards Conference. If you add up all the hours spent strengthening your leadership skills, it would be beyond admirable. Julia also spends a lot of time giving back to her community. She has been a volunteer at several road race races, cleaned up local parks, and has involved in brainstorming ideas and fundraised for her community. It is with great honor and my privilege to introduce Julia Walker as our cave recipient. I'm sure you will hear their names in the near future as well as later on in life. They're two outstanding young heroes.
Come on out here. We're going to get a picture. Congratulations to you. Congratulations to you. I'll stand in the back.
Yes.
Susie and I will stand back there. Both our middle school students are here, so Mr. Bigby, I'll turn it over to you for our...
We are, yes.
Right. So certainly, a night with all the activity and parking lot, I know is difficult for me to park. It makes me proud to work in Eastline, to see a night like this in the spring and to see everyone else. So I'm going to start with Kennedy. Kennedy, Holdzapple, can you come on up, please? Just finished the concert tonight at middle school, correct?
Yeah, speeding ticket getting over here.
So these, Kennedy, these are going to be the words of the teachers that work with you every day. Kennedy Holdzapple. Kennedy clearly demonstrates all of the cave leadership qualities and does so consistently. She is a member of a leaders club, cross-country, Europe track band, competed in Eastern Regionals, and plays soccer as well. Recently, the Breakers team competed in a home base on a coin where they raised money for Boston's Army, they know, a local charity. And Kennedy's home base was a bit, we'll say, unmotivated until she called them into action. It was quite impressive to watch her rally the troops. Her home base outcollected all the other home bases in the whole building by class team. In addition, Kennedy leads by example, always following the school expectations. She is the first to volunteer to help and never shies away from academic challenge. During our flex lot, Kennedy mentors some of her peers who are struggling with math. She does so with kindness and a level of professionalism that one might not expect out of an eighth grade student. Finally, Kennedy leads any cooperative group, no matter how challenging the personalities. It is with great pleasure that I introduce to you Kennedy Holdzapple. Carter, come on down. How you doing? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Every morning, Carter, on Carter's arrival to school, he leads the morning news crew. He's kind of a behind-the-scenes person, an engineer type that makes sure our school news is always done with pride. It's the one thing that unifies our building every day, one of many, and he's responsible for it. Carter will take on every responsibility with a smile on his face. He is a person that demonstrates all of the qualities of a leader. Carter Benora is someone that you can rely on for anything. Every day, he does something kind for someone else. He puts up chairs in the classroom to help out. He might help other students organize their assignments, and he helps with people struggling with their work. Carter's always there to support his peers and the adults in his life. He has an unbelievable true work ethic. He shows commitment to his activities. He leads the charge in the jazz band and is a committed member to his soccer team. His teachers feel that Carter's devotion to Elms make it a kind and happy place. Last year, I went up to Carter. We do, grade four comes up, they're coming up tomorrow, and we invite them up and have them do lunch and whatnot. So maybe a week ahead of time, I said, hey, Carter, I have this really great idea. What about if you went and we did it all lip dub and we did this really great music, but you filmed all our teachers? But you only have a week to do it, and I don't want you to miss any classes. And he, with some friends, said, I will get it done. And then when he finished, we gave him a very modest Amazon card, and Carter said, I can't, I can't accept that. I can't take that because that's just what I want to do for the school. So we twisted his envelope and we worked that out. So it is with great pleasure that I introduce Carter Benora as the cave recipient for the leadership award. So one really, really quick story that exemplifies both Carter and Kennedy tonight is that we had a concert tonight. And so I did the whole arrangement with the music teacher, and I said, hey, you know what, if you can get them up in the concert right at the beginning so they're not late for the board of ed meeting, that would be great. And both of them came to me and said, yeah, but we have a responsibility to everybody in that concert. We want to do the whole concert. So that was pretty commendable as well. So congratulations.
Just thanks to all the parents and family and residents of the Eastline Club. I'm sure the recipients are very proud of you.
And you don't have to say, you don't have to say what that's the meaning. Oh, we always love to have people stay.
Yeah. That's good. Okay. We do have a new person that's joining us.
Absolutely.
The new director of facilities. And Jeff, you want to...
Yes, I want to bring up Chris Lund, Christian Lund, I should say. Chris has decided to join the Eastline Public Schools. It's been a while now. This whole year, we've kind of limped along as we lost our supervisor last summer, unfortunately. And Ted has continued to do well. But we really, we wanted to find that right person that was really going to help our district and our facilities move forward, and we have found it in Chris. He's going to bring, I think, some expertise in management and oversight of our custodial staff, our maintenance staff, our buildings, as well as an engineering component with, you know, we've got a lot of new technical components with our new renovations that have taken place at our elementary schools, as well as looking at future savings, cost-saving measures, when it comes to, you know, the changing over from light bulbs to, you know, more energy-efficient bulbs and so forth. So a lot of different things in that world Chris is going to continue to look at, I think, as he joins us. So I wanted to have an opportunity for you all to meet him. And Chris, any words that you'd like to say?
I'd just say I've had two impressions, first of all, since I've been here. First is everyone's been very welcoming and very happy. And of course, the question I get from everyone is, when do you start? Which I'm thinking of as the morning. Quite frequently, on June 10th of the year. I've been looking forward to it. And of course, as the engineering facilities manager I am, I was very worried when I pulled up today and tried to find my place. Great, no parking. In all seriousness, I appreciate the offer that Jeff made. I'm very excited to start here. Sometimes we forget, living in one place, how people look at where we live from the outside. Being an outsider to Eastline and the Westside with my family, the reputation precedes it. Everybody knows in the area that this is an excellent district, and I feel very honored and fortunate to be working with and for you all. So thank you very much.
Good. Thanks very much, Chris.
And everybody had a chance to view Chris's resume, and if you had any questions for him at all?
No.
Questions? So when he going to start?
June 10th. He's already been in district a little bit, spending some time, coming back actually this Friday for a little bit of time working with our current contracted individual, Dave Sinowski. Dave's done a great job part-time, but we're really just looking forward to getting Chris on board and moving forward. So, Chris, thank you for joining us tonight. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Good.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
Okay, at this point, the board would be more than glad to hear any public comment concerning any matter with the school district. Anybody like to address the board at this time? Linda? Oh, okay.
Hi.
Hi, Linda.
I'm not sure you're all aware, but the new insurance rate has a $12.50 per employee per month fee for a broker. I have to say, that's not needed, nor is it wanted. It's not needed because the state plan is very responsive. People at the state are responsive. You call them, they answer immediately. That's the people that we should go to. We shouldn't have to go through a middleman. It's not wanted because really, it's about time for people to step up and actually make their own phone calls. And to make a call through a middleman is actually not a good idea. It's kind of like an extended warranty, which we all know is not really the best thing in the world. An extended warranty is kind of insurance against fear. And we have no fear about the state plan. We know that it's going to work well. So we would advocate, as with all bargaining, to advocate for dropping the $12.50 per member per month fee. Because if you were going to pay that $45,000 that just comes from the teacher's side, I bet that would be something you cut right away. I don't have the chance to cut that, but you do that for all of us. So.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board at this time? Anybody else? No? Okay. We have some minutes for approval. We have the minutes from our April 22nd Board of Ed meeting. It was a regularly scheduled meeting. Anybody like to make a motion on those?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the rule scheduled April 22nd meeting. Second.
Second?
Yeah.
Any corrections, comments, modifications to those minutes? Are you okay with them? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstained? I think Jill...
Just Jill.
Jill wasn't at the meeting. Yeah. Okay. One abstention. And then we have the minutes from our May 13th Eastline Board of Education Committee of the Whole Meeting. That was held, so...
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the committee of the whole meeting from May 13th. Second.
Second. Candace seconded. Any corrections, modifications to those minutes? Nope? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
John abstained.
I have you there.
You were there. You were there, Jill. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you were here, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure you were. Yep.
Because we were in here.
Yep, so...
It's been tough for a while.
They just go so fast, yeah. So those pass, and John abstaining. Okay. We're on the special reports, and we have Mark Salerno's here. First, that was our selectman representative.
Good evening. I came from the middle school concert, too. It was very good.
Was it good?
We have a referendum, as you know, Thursday at the community center, so everyone should get out there and vote. We have Memorial Day coming up on Monday, and there's a Memorial Day vigil at the town hall at 7:00 p.m.
That's Friday or Saturday?
That's Sunday night.
Sunday?
Yep, before Memorial Day. And the only other thing I have for you is public safety building is moving forward. There's, the subcommittee picked four architectural firms that are waiting to get votes from, so...
Is that quote, moving forward, or...
Yeah, we're waiting, yeah, to get proposals back from them. And we expect to start, you know, by the end of the year. So with the renovations for that.
Good.
Question. I saw something in the paper about a water meter referendum tomorrow night or something.
The water meter referendum, was that last week?
I don't know. I saw it in the paper yesterday from Wednesday, so that's why I'm curious.
I think it was last Wednesday, yeah. Yeah, that was to upgrade. So that's the Water and Sewer Commission. It does go through the town, although it's under the water and sewer jurisdiction. Yeah, that's to upgrade the meters to meters that will report back to the town. Oh, you don't have to send people out. And it'll also allow close monitoring, so if people have leaks, they don't have to wait until they get a bill six months later for a thousand dollars.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
Cheety bathrooms, sometime soon?
Yeah, that's moving forward. Yes, yes.
Please?
This year.
Sometime soon.
Yes.
Buy some of them, or...
That should be progressing. I don't have a date for you right now, but yeah.
Good. Any other questions for Mark? Barbara?
Isn't there also coming up either this week or next week, a meeting on the...
Highway.
Construction that's going to be going on for XM 74 on 95.
Yeah, I don't have this. Yes. I don't know the date of that. There's been a few of them because there's been a couple of, there's actually four bridge projects going on in town.
I think it's the 23rd.
Okay.
I think it's the 23rd.
I saw it somewhere, but I don't remember what.
It's coming right up.
Okay.
Yeah. That's the big one.
Yeah. Yeah. Good luck. So, any other questions? No? Okay, thanks a lot, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
For being here. We have our two Eastline High School student representatives here. Let's see, Paige and Sme.
Yes. All right, good evening, everybody. I'll start right off by talking about the Spring Musical, Guys and Dolls. So that took place on May 3rd, 4th, and 5th. And it was outstanding. In fact, it was one of the best years for tickets. And Paige was telling me the cast and play itself received several Halo nominations. And Halo nominations are like, sort of like the state award for theater productions. So we're very proud of that and proud of the drama crew. District Music Concert, grades five through 12, was on April 10th. The Chamber Recital was on April 25th. Allstate Festival was on May 12th through the 13th. And there will be a band and orchestra concert on Thursday, May 23rd, at 7:00. And the choir and jazz concert will take place on May 30th. Kids from the marine biology class are on the Bermuda trip currently. They landed today, and the trip will last until the 26th. There's an art expo, obviously, taking place in the commons from 6:00 to 8:00. Parent-teacher conferences were April 9th. And comb in your pocket day was April 12th.
I'm sorry, comb in your pocket?
Comb in your pocket day.
Oh, palm, like...
Yeah. AP exams are over, finally. They took place from May 6th to May 17th. And I am more than glad to distance myself from the college board, finally. Yeah, that relationship's over. Final exams will be held from June 11th to June 17th. And the diversity club is holding a movie night on June 7th. And I'll turn it over to Paige.
Yeah, so we also have the Great East Music Festival and Physics Trip to Six Flags on the 31st. The underclassmen academic awards will be tomorrow in the auditorium starting at 7:00. The National Honor Society inductions will be on June 3rd at 7:00. I believe that's in the auditorium as well. The senior academic awards will be on June 4th at 7:00 in the auditorium. Junior prom was this past Saturday at the Mystic Marriott, and it was, I attended. It was a great time. Everybody had a lot of fun. The senior prom will be on June 1st at Glastonbury Hills Country Club. Coming up, a lot of senior stuff as we reach the end of the year. The senior dinner dance will be on June 6th from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Port and Starboard at Ocean Beach in New London. The senior trip to Musquamikit this year will be on June 8th. And tomorrow, all juniors will be taking the in-school NGSS science test. As far as sports school, the boys and girls track team is currently competing at the ECC championship. I'm sure you all know from parking. The boys lacrosse team is currently eight and eight with ECC's coming up. The girls lacrosse team is 13 and three. The golf, the boys golf team is 11-0. The girls softball senior night is also tonight. And the boys tennis team finished up their fourth year in a row undefeated, winning the ECC title, so it's exciting.
So much going on.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah. Yep, that's all we got.
Wow.
Boys baseball ECC game is tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Very good. Wow, lots happening.
Lots going on, yeah.
Any questions for...
Do y'all get a school bus, or a nice bus to drive up, or does everyone drive individually? I can't remember.
It's kind of up to the grade, but we, everyone drove up individually for junior prom. I'm not sure what.
Yeah, last year for junior prom, we just had like a group of friends just rented a school bus out. We went up in a school bus.
So at Glastonbury, the senior class, they're doing the road trip by themselves? They're just doing the road trip?
Some might do it by themselves. For my group of friends, I know we're probably going to rent some sort of bus out, or just going to go together.
That's nice. Good, good.
It's like, good, it's not like it's an epidemic.
More tuxes and limousines.
Tuxes are upwards of about $200 now.
Dresses are up there.
Dresses are up there.
Exactly.
Very expensive.
Not cheap.
Any other questions? Good. Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks for, thanks for coming. And wow, lots happening.
Would you like to stay for the meeting, or are you...
I'll stay for a little bit.
Yeah, I'll stay for a little bit.
Okay, so we do have a consent agenda. Is everybody okay with the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question?
No, you can just say, you just say, if you want to ask a question, just...
I want to ask a question, I guess.
Okay, all right. So there's just one item on the consent agenda, so... Well, there's just one item on the consent agenda, so. So we will then discuss the consent agenda item.
Instruction.
Under instruction.
Make a C.
Pull section 6.
6.
6C.
Yeah, so it'll be 6C. So we'll move that item to 6C. That's for the field trip to Italy, so. Okay. Okay, so that brings us to our discussion action items for the, for the evening. The first one up is something, I think we do this every year, which has to do with the healthy food certification, which state statute requires that.
Exactly, before, prior to July 1. Yep, our same, same three each year, the next three items. Mr. Urban is here, but it's basically, nothing really has changed, Chris, that we.
The first one is just about to become part of the healthy schools.
Yep.
Which have been done since 2014.
Yeah.
And it gets us extra revenue per reimbursable meal. And we have to follow the state guidelines on what items we're allowed to sell during the school day.
Yeah.
The next two items are if the board wants to give exemptions for special events like dances and football games and those type of things, allowing them to sell things not on the approval list, so.
Right, right.
Say like today at the track, they can sell
Candies and burgers.
Candy bars or soda, but it's only specific special events. You can't sell them at a practice, but you can sell them at a game.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, okay. All right, so. Who would like to read the, read the motion into the minutes here? So you want to do one?
I'll do one if someone wants to pick up.
Get ready for the next one, Ryan.
I make a motion to approve pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 1021, that's a 5?
Yeah.
215F. The Board of Education or governing authority certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the school under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. The certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or by non-school organizations and groups.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Eric seconded it. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Abstain. Passes unanimously. And so that brings us to the next one, which is, is this on the beverage? No, this is the office school.
This exemption for food items.
Yeah. Okay, and again, there's anything to say?
Nothing new that we haven't already been doing.
It's the exact same as last year. They didn't change the wording or anything.
Yeah, okay. So Ryan, would you like to read this one? Would you like to make a motion?
Sure.
I don't want to wear out Jamie's voice here.
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education or governing authority will allow the sales, the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, that the sale is at the location of the event. And three, that the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than one, involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held.
Okay.
I'll second.
Jamie seconded it. Any discussion on this one? No? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Abstain. Passes unanimously. And the last one, this is the one that has to do with the sale of beverages.
No, same as this current.
Just with the beverages.
One third one.
Okay. Who would like to read, make a motion on this one? You want to do it, Candace?
Sure.
Okay.
The Board of Education will allow the sale of students of beverages not listed in Section 10-221 of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Number two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the beverages are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event isn't, am I reading the right one?
Yep, yep, yep.
Thank you very much.
It's very, it has lots.
Sounds exactly what you're saying.
It has a lot similarities.
An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice meeting or extracurricular activity. The school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the beverage sales.
Good.
I'll second.
And Jamie seconded it. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Abstain. Passes unanimously. Okay. Okay, the next item up is on the planetarium facility usage. And Jeff, do you have the background on this?
Yeah, just a little bit of background. We, we met, the committee, the subcommittee of the board met with Stars to STEM. Had a good discussion, went through some of their budget items. They provided us an update, actually, this past Friday. Stars to STEMs had sent an update on a couple of things that they're working on still. Basically, what it comes down to is repeating what we did last year with holding the space here at the high school with the letter of agreement. So basically, the same, same letter, same agreement. You know, we, and we can continue to do so at the high school. You know, the room is occupied and being used right now, but, you know, we're not looking to do any changes, you know, to the, to the room or anything of that nature at this point. So my recommendation to, to move forward with another year of holding the space and allow Stars to STEMs, and Mrs. Swan is here, to continue to work at the progress in relation to the planetarium and see where that goes. But any, committee members are here as well.
Yeah. Anything to add from the committee?
I had a modification, but nothing to add.
Okay. Okay, do we, do we need a motion on this then?
Can I make the modification?
Yeah.
So.
To the letter?
Yeah, to the letter, Eric, or?
What's that?
To the letter or to the, okay.
Just minor. I think this should all be to Stars to STEM. That, that's who our arrangement is with.
Yeah, that's true, we repeated the.
And we put in the head
Okay, yeah, makes sense.
You know, that Diane Swan's president. So it's the Stars to STEM, Diane Swan president, and then in the letter, say, for an additional year while Stars to STEM move forward to formalize. We're now with more the company than, because if Diane, for some reason you left and someone else became president, we're still arranging with Stars to STEM. You're just a part of the.
Makes sense.
And just, everything is set with Stars to STEM, right? You are a complete organization, and just, just to make sure that's clear, yeah.
Good, good.
March Gala is on June 19.
Yep.
So you'll be receiving invitations.
Okay.
Good.
Yes.
Thanks.
Good. Perfect.
We'll change that and reissue.
Okay.
Otherwise, good.
Yeah, okay. So do we need a motion? Do you want a motion on that, or?
Yeah, you can make a motion under the auspice that, you know, I'll adjust that to Stars to STEM.
All right, I would like to make a motion to approve sending a letter out to Stars to STEM, letting them know that we will be holding their space for another academic year.
Okay.
Second.
Eric seconded it. Any more discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Abstain. Passes unanimously, and thanks Diane. And the committee members, subcommittee members. Okay, next item is just an update regarding the elementary redistricting for 2019-2020. Did I miss one? Oh, yeah, oh my, oh shucks.
We can skip over it if you want.
I tried to, I tried to move past that one, okay. Okay, we'll go back to E then. An update regarding the Board of Education budget for 2019-2020. Okay, well, I'll let you have all the fun on that one.
Yeah, thanks, appreciate it. Now, work continues on this. Let me preface it, I think we, you know, no decision, obviously, should be, should be made, you know, this evening. We've got the referendum coming up this coming Thursday. Let's see where that, that winds up, because, you know, if that doesn't pass, then we're, you know, doing a lot more work, probably. So we need to make sure that passes, and then we can really hone in, I think, on the $250,000 reduction. We worked a little bit more with the administrative staff on a couple of items. Tried to kind of hone in, prioritize a few more. We added and kind of separated out from the last discussion of the Committee of the Whole, those untouchable, five key areas that really, you know, we, we want and need to leave in place. And kind of, again, we, administratively, we kind of brainstormed that top lifts, that top list, the Board of Finance reduction amounts that you have there. And I think we can play with those numbers. And let me give an example, like the late bus, for instance. I wouldn't recommend cutting the entire late bus. But I, I think after, you know, this Thursday and the referendum, that should be one that we should look at. Maybe there's a reduction of a day of the late bus, and we begin to piecemeal together. I do think also that we're really closely watching those kindergarten numbers and whether or not we need that third kindergarten position at Nianic Center. And Mr. Provost is watching that as well. We're still, as of today, at 35 students, so the class size would be 11.7 right now. That, that's too, yeah, that's, that's pretty small. So we might get a few more. Again, last summer, we got a total of 10 additional students over the summer, across the three schools, 10. We've got to be careful, because, you know, you go from three down to two classrooms, and, you know, splitting that, those numbers could really jump higher than we want for kindergarten. So we're watching that closely, but I, I think that could be a piecemeal. And it wouldn't impact anybody directly, because we have an open third grade position right now that we haven't posted yet, that we need. So the person potentially could, you know, slide in, or we would fill that and just eliminate that kindergarten position. So nobody would be, you know, losing a, a job, which is important, so. The global language at the elementary level, you know, we had some more discussions about that. And that kind of was at the top of our list for potential reduction. It, it's, it's a nice experience, you know, for the kids, but I feel, given the, you know, the amount of time that we're providing that for our elementary students, it's, it's a, it's a hit, but it's something that we, you know, we seriously consider as an item that would be eliminated. Middle school basketball as well. We've got a lot of rec teams in town, AU teams in town, so potentially eliminate some of that. I did speak some with Eric. We need to just look at the busing for that, Marianne. I didn't think it was much, but for the middle school ba, they travel just maybe.
I included that in the estimate.
Did you put that in the 7,000, 96?
Yeah, it's minimal, because they don't travel.
I knew it was minimal, but I didn't know if you had added that in there or not, and I wanted, we were going to talk about that.
I think, yeah, it's not much at all.
So, and then the refs, and Eric, you don't know if there's anything else that you.
I didn't count the run.
And I know, again, there's a handful of games, and Mr. Bick, I don't know if you know how many middle school basketball games they hold, total number?
Six or seven.
It's not many.
I'd say it's six.
Yeah, it's not many games, but. So that, that's one. And, and I think we openly should, you know, after next, this coming Thursday, discuss more on the sports component. We administratively had some discussions about, a little bit about freshman, sophomore, freshman JV. Maybe that's combined to frosh sort of thing. So we're kind of coining it as a possibility. The library assistants, I think, should still be on there, and then potentially a secretary. So with that, I'll kind of open it up to, you know, some further discussion if we want to have now or if we want to wait till after.
I just, I just have a point of information. Am I correct that the funding for the elementary world language teacher is not part of our operating budget?
No, it's not. That comes out of the spiral revenue budget, but we would apply that money towards something else to.
Oh, so we would use it?
Yeah, we'd have to, yeah, we'd have to do it that way, exactly.
You can do that.
So.
Jeff, I have a question.
Yep.
How can a school like the Columbia School System, you may know more about this than I do, the town of Columbia?
Okay, yeah.
Okay. You work next door in Seale.
Yes.
Okay. How can they afford language in their elementary and we can't?
I don't, you know, Salem has it too, Jill, some do, some don't.
I don't mean to say anyone's doing anything wrong, but.
They're a regional high school. It's a regional high school?
Yeah, K8.
Is that what Columbia is?
Well, Columbia sends their kids, yeah, their students off to a, a regional high school experience.
But I'm talking about the elementary.
Yeah, they're a K8 experience.
And I just happen to work with somebody's daughters in the school system, and her daughter works, gets language three days a week. She needs to be Spanish or French, but she's, obviously, she's Spanish. But I just, that has befuddled me ever since I heard that, knowing that we're going to cut it. And it's not, I'm just saying, what is it? I'm just saying, what is it we're doing wrong that we can't continue? This is so important. It's a global.
Do we know that it costs per student at Columbia?
I don't, and she would be able to answer that question.
Because those are things, right?
No, I know what you're saying.
And what other trade-offs did they make? So they have that, and they don't, so that's what we have to do.
How many fourth graders there are?
I don't want to get rid of it either. I'm just trying to make sure when you compare.
I'm not comparing origins. It's origins, origins, it's origins to animals. But I just had to pose a question.
Can I, oh, I'm sorry, good one. Can I, oh, I'm sorry, good one.
I have a couple of things. So, I think to answer Jill, I think that we need to prioritize it. I don't think that this, that our district prioritizes it. I'd like to see it prioritized more. It's not a secret. We, um, had taken it off a few years ago. I want to say it was the first year I was on the board. It might have been two thousand and twelve.
When Chris was on the board.
Yeah. Um, and it was really, we needed to cut it, but it was really that we were going to be bringing it back. And it was a fight to bring it back. And, and I don't believe that it should be on the list. I think that we should be prioritizing it more. So, that's to answer your question. Um, I want to ask about the out of district bus, if there's been any more work done on that, if we can look at that scenario before, um, cut.
Yes, that's on the, that's on the, on the list.
It just wasn't spoken to. It was spoken, oh, the only thing that I heard was late bus. So, if I have a late bus for in, in, in district students and I have a bus that is going out of district, I want to keep the in district.
Yeah, it wasn't gonna-
It's, it's not going to work out because we got a grant, we got a grant for the magnitude of transportation.
But I think all, everything that was brainstormed at our committee of the whole meeting is on the ta- is on the table. Um, and we should, in, in an open, in an open forum, post, hopefully pass the referendum here or whatever, that, that we should, we should basically have the con- those conversations, um, and, and, and do just what Candace said, which is really kind of lay out and prioritize, you know, where we're at.
So, it's still time to save a tenth, is what you're saying.
Yeah, well, yeah, and I'll just-
Nothing's been, yeah.
Nothing's been changed.
Nothing's been changed.
But let me just say, the one thing is, is that, and it is really important, is that when, this is the, this is the challenge that we have. When you remove something, and I'll, I'll use the late bus as an example, it becomes enormously difficult-
To put it back.
-to put it back on. And that's why having this, the robust conversations around what are the priorities and what are the, what are the id- and what are there, are any other ideas or things that we could, you know, come up with that, that could help, you know, come up with the, the shortfall of the $250,000 is, is very important. Because when you, it's just a, when you drop, drop, like, the global language is so hard for us to, to, to pull it back and it'll be, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be, you know, another gener- it'll be, you know.
I know if we voted, we'd all want to keep, I assume the majority would want to keep global language.
Well, I, I think that what you're going to find is, is the majority's going to want to keep everything, but-
Yeah.
But that's not, that, that-
Two hundred fifty thousand.
That would be, that would be the challenge.
When we're looking at things, I mean, I, I don't think that there's one that's easier than the other, but when I'm looking at what might sting the least. So, when you're talking about the late bus, really, there's a tremendous amount of students that utilize the bus-
Yes.
-and they utilize it with the clubs that are aligned with it right after school. So, it's, and it's a culture that we've created. If you, if you were to take that away, then that's going to eliminate this, it's going to, it's going to eliminate a lot of different things. So, it does.
Yep.
So, I just, you know, whatever is eliminated, we have to look at what's going to come next.
Okay, Barbara, I'm sorry.
I just want to say one thing, you know, when, when, you know, Jeff was talking about, well, we may not need a third kindergarten and nobody's going to lose their job because we have a third opening. Let's keep in mind that if we eliminate the world language in elementary, someone's going to lose their job.
Yeah, that's a different story. Yeah, yeah, good point. Yeah, thanks, Barbara.
And we don't usually like to do that.
No, we don't, no. Eric, did you-
I just, so can, someone remind me, the global language program, is, what, how many days a week does each, how does it, how does it work? Because here's, here's what I'd like to understand. My thought is, is we either go all in or we don't. And my worry is that we're half in. And it's not, are we getting the value of, so, I, I am a firm believer that you need to start global language really young. If you look outside of the U.S., they start really young and they real, and you look, learn multiple languages in elementary school. We don't, we're so far from that. Are we getting enough from this global language? And that's, that would be my question. But I don't, I, I forget. I know we've talked about it. I can't remember. How often do our students get, how often is the, I can't remember.
Our fourth graders are getting a thirty-minute experience, two times a week, an hour, an hour a week. Um, it's a cultural overview. It's not a deep dive into, you know, the language. Um, I think they're covering, you know, some of the basics. Um, but again, it's, it's thirty minutes each, each of the two times. Um, so, that's, that's really what we're looking at. I mean, she is, she's a wonderful individual, the, our teacher. Um, but it's, uh, again, it's, it's not what, originally when we brought this up four or five years ago, we talked about wanting to have a French and a Spanish experience, but we couldn't fund the teacher. And we still couldn't, yeah, we couldn't fund either one of them. Um, so, I think you're right. It's either you're all in or you're not and you put it into the operating budget.
But Jeff, I do want to say, to respond to Eric, that the research on world language, the reason you're supposed to start young is that if you learn a world language before the age of ten-
Yep.
-which in fourth grade, the kids are eight, nine.
Nine.
All right, so if you learn a world language before the age of ten, it accesses a part of your brain that will be closed to you if you do not learn a language before the age of ten. Right? So, that's why people like Henry Kissinger always spoke English with this thick accent because he learned it as an adult. If you learn it before the age of ten, you're going to be learning world language in a totally different place, which will make you much better at it and will make you much better at learning other languages later on. So, just in the sense that giving the kids world language in fourth grade is giving them access to that part of their brain, which they wouldn't have if they didn't have it, to me, makes it worth what we're paying for it. And the studies show that kids who take foreign language in elementary school do better later on in, on their SATs, even though you're glad you're rid of them. They do better on their SATs when they learn language early on and it helps them in other things. So, personally, I think we're getting our money with.
I agree with everything you said in terms of the foundation. Um, I lived in England for a few years. My kids lived in England. And in England, um, they started in, at four years old, they're taking French. At six years old, they're starting to also take Spanish. And then at, by ten, they're deciding between German and another language. And I can't remember what they got to choose. So, and, and so, they learn and by the time of middle school, middle school graduation, they're giving, the, the doctoring gave their speech in French, right? Didn't speak French before, gave it in French, right? So, that, that is something that has stuck with me. I don't think thirty minutes twice a week in fourth grade necessarily opens up that part of the mind. I would like a curriculum change, right? If we're, I'd rather go all in and figure out how can we change our curriculum to introduce it so that our students are learning. And if it's, I don't care what, you know, if it's Spanish or French or Mandarin or whatever, something that they're learning in first grade, kindergarten, first grade and start introducing it part of the curriculum. And it might take away a little from social studies. It might take a little away from English, take a little, but to fold that in as part of our curriculum. That's where I would be.
Oh, I would.
So, I'm okay, I don't, for personally, and, and, you know, could get killed by people not agreeing with, but I'm okay giving up the global language because I don't know that we're getting enough value. And I'd rather look at seeing how do we incorporate it into our overall curriculum. That's where I'm-
Okay, good. Jamie?
So, I have a question for the pageant to meet. Um, one of our discussions that we've been having is doing pay for play at the high school level. Or cutting back freshman sports and making it what we call the froshmore team. In your experience at the high school, if we were to make it pay for play, how much of your student population do you think we'd be cutting out of sports? Honest answer, please. And I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but you're in the trenches.
It's hard to-
Yeah. Do you think that we'd be cutting out some kids?
Absolutely, 100%.
Definitely. I, I don't think I can put a number on it, but-
Do you think if we, because we also talked about making a scholarship for kids who can't afford to do pay for play. Do you think some of your kids, your co-students who can't afford it would be willing to come out and say, my family can't afford it, can I get a scholarship?
And I guess it would be sort of like, be a little embarrassing to do it. But if you could incorporate it the same way you incorporated the free and reduced meals and do something along those lines, it would make it a lot easier if that was the route that you're going to take.
Do it maybe through the process of signing up too, so it's not like in some-
It's not something on the side, sort of incorporated as sort of like summer paperwork.
We don't want to cut people out-
Right.
-of the opportunity of playing sports because that's not what we're here for. We want everyone to have the same experiences. So, I'm-
Yeah.
-trying to get a feedback from, you know, your student population better than we do.
I think the kids that were determined and really want to play will play. But you see, like, the kids who are on the fence of, like, joining a team, right? And there are plenty of these guys. I know kids, I mean, I was on the fence of joining the cross-country team. I was on the fence of joining the tennis team, you know, freshman year as well. And, um, I think that making it pay to play might, might have pulled me on the side of the fence that was like, oh, what's the point, you know? What would the price be? Do you know?
We don't know. We just have been throwing out ideas and numbers at this point.
But I think if, I think, you also think about the kids that aren't really sure if they want to play or what they want to do.
Very well said.
Yeah, it might, it might swing them to the side that they don't want to do it.
I think those kids that have been playing, like, let's say soccer their whole life will continue. But yeah, definitely those kids that are like, maybe join later, like, maybe their junior year, join a sport will definitely.
Yeah. And I think if, you know, if you want to be that district that sort of encourages trying new experiences and pushing your boundaries and pushing yourself, I don't know if, um, if pay to play sort of works well with that. But I think if you do decide to go down that route, definitely try to incorporate it somehow-
A scholarship.
-into the free and reduced meals or something like that so that kids don't have to come out, you know, during registration season and say, I can't afford it.
Right, and how do you feel if we combined freshman and JV into like a froshmore instead? Do you think we'd be cutting out a population group or?
For smaller sports, I don't think so. Like, for tennis, for example, we don't have a freshman team. So, for some sports, would not be affected at all.
And I also think a lot of freshmen now do also get pulled up to JV anyway. So, I don't know how much of that it would necessarily change. I think that's a good idea.
Would that save a significant amount of money?
We don't know. We're just trying to think of things to make that money up-
Okay.
-in the budget. And that's one of our bigger line items. So, that's-
Yeah.
Okay. We were having discussion. And my concern is, is that we're going to cut out student activity and opportunity for kids who need it or want it by making it pay for play. So, I just wanted to get a, some kind of an idea of what you see in the school.
Just thinking, I would definitely be more in favor of combining, yeah, mixing and combining the freshman and JV and trying that out instead of making it pay to play. I'm not sure how much money. You'd obviously have to crunch the numbers and see what would come out. But I think that would have a far less of an impact. And-
Combining the freshman and JV.
Yeah. And in some regard, in some regards, it might also help the new freshman people coming up to the school bond more with their teammates. Um, just an idea, I'm just throwing that out. But, but definitely more in favor of that than the pay for play.
Thanks, guys. Thank you for saying this.
Okay, Ryan?
Yeah, so I guess where, where I am on the budget cuts is, you know, I'm definitely much more inclined to reduce, um, items rather than, you know, eliminate, eliminate whole programs. But I understand we have to get to two fifty, which may entail doing stuff we don't, we don't want to do. Um, but I guess I'd like to make sure that what we get from, from the administration is sort of a, here's our, here's kind of our recommendation on how to get there. And then here's some of the other options that are kind of on the table that are at least palatable. And then we can kind of have that discussion of if, uh, you know, if there's an item on there that we're not, we're not comfortable with, you know, could we elevate one and kind of assess the priorities? And maybe a, and I, I think you've already started to try to identify the untouchables on there. So, so maybe very high level sort of, um, categorized rank, like, these are just really, we just see no way around this, this, you should do this. Um, and, you know, we can obviously discuss that. And then, you know, these ones, it's on the list because we had to get to two fifty, but we're not, we don't feel 100%. Um, if you were, you could play with these a little bit. Just, just to kind of have that plan so we can kind of start from a framework that's largely complete and then start batting it around.
I think you're aligned with our thinking. Eric, that's after Thursday with the referendum. That, that's the next piece we need to bring to you is, listen, here is our prioritized, you know, list of reductions. You know, there's still, we still continue to look at, um, the operating budget. I think, Mariana, there was, there was some, some savings in oil for next year. Um, however, electric, well, electric was kind of through the roof this year because of all the construction that went on.
Yeah, because of all the construction.
Yeah, so it's hard to, you can't really measure it, but-
There's a, um, ten or twelve thousand dollar savings in our liability insurance. I had budgeted, um, a three percent increase. So, we actually, they kept it flat this year. So, we have a small savings there.
So, we've got some small little pockets of things we're trying to kind of-
We have some small pockets, obviously not.
Hold on to, to fill the gap where if you don't make it to the two fifty, here's, you know, you've got six thousand here or we've got, you know, the ten thousand there.
That's, um, extra cost on the electricity. Is there any way that can come out of the project? I mean, it's really part of the project, right? I mean-
It is.
Yeah. It's just hard to quantify, I guess, to split up how much, you know.
We've got years of data of-
Yeah, you do, you're right.
What electrical costs are. I mean, we could, if it's, if we're talking about a fifty percent increase, if that's, I, I have no idea what kind of numbers you're talking about. But if, if we're talking about paying for the moving of the data and the technology stuff and corporal is added to the budget, then why, why wouldn't that be a cost too?
I'm projecting probably about a hundred thousand over, I think, right now.
I'm sorry, did you say?
That's a pretty significant number.
Did she say?
I realize it was that high.
Hundred thousand.
Okay.
That's a lot.
We've got a plan.
So, that's something we can definitely, look, I don't know how the committee would feel about it, but it's something to talk about.
Yeah, then you'll have to, they'll have to cut something.
We've got a contingency fund in the-
Well, wait until you get to the slides I put together.
We still, do we, have we got the final number from the town yet or is that a-
No, I, but I, I, we'll, 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 that's a-
No, it's a final number, a contingency.
Rough estimate.
So, so just for calendar wise, right? So, Thursday's a vote if it gets shot down.
Oh, yeah, we're in trouble.
We're in real trouble, right? Because you can't, you have to go, or more than two fifty, yeah.
Yeah, they'll, they'll cut us.
When's our next meeting to actually make some decisions?
June tenth.
Tenth, yeah.
June tenth, yeah. So, I mean, we still have some time. I think we were in this boat last year with the $200,000 reduction. We were into June, talking about it and trying to finalize it. So, I kind of had that same picture-
Yep.
-I had to get the referendum hopefully passed and, and-
But I think, yeah, but I do, I do believe that it's extremely important that, that once we, when we start hunkering down on those, those discussions, that we enable enough time so that we can have a conversation, but so that the public can also hear the conversation as well. And we'll have, and they will have an opportunity to voice their opinions to us as we go through those deliberations. Because quite frankly, I mean, there's, there is probably, some, somebody is not going to be happy. Um, so, so we want to make sure that we get all the information and understanding before we, before we move forward. And I think Ryan's point is a very good one, too, is that it's so important that we hear from Jeff and the administrative team as to their thinking because, in fact, they're the ones that have the best perspective on exactly, um, what will, what will be the, you know, the, the least, least painful in terms of meeting the $250,000. Okay, everybody all good? Eric?
One more.
Yep.
One more thing to think about if, if this would work is, I think one of the challenges we're having is we don't have, the order magnitude of the cut was more than we thought. So, in our heads and thinking, we weren't thinking we're going to have to touch global language or any of these other items. I'm wondering if, if there are some items that we could reduce in, for next year's budget, but not a long-term, you know, as a, on a temporary basis. So, for the one year, you might cut, I'm not going to say anything, but cut something that might save $50,000. But we'll reinstate it the following year. So, it's more of just a pause for that one item. And then that gives us a year and a half to plan for what we're really going to do to get the reductions that's more going forward. Um, in other words, there's like a short term, are there short-term things we could do and save some money that then gives, buys us time so that we can plan for the following year? We're not going to get the money back holistically, but we could give it back to that one area and then, um-
So, you're like saying we would defer purchasing a major block of textbooks-
Could be-
-for one more year. Now, maybe, I can't see.
I only have one block.
I know, I know you do, I know you're doing, but that would, that would be an example.
I already said that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Could be some event, it could be some, something like.
Okay, yeah, that's a good thought, good thought.
I would, I would hesitate it there. I would caution against that though because of the things we have coming next year.
Yeah.
The twenty-five percent teacher pension potentially passing June. Our, Maria, Mariana, our ECS funding goes down next year, right? Isn't that what it is? And the year after?
Yes. When we're planning for 2021, yes, it starts to, it starts to go down.
So, like, this year's tough with the two hundred and fifty, but if you have twenty-five percent teacher pension next year and an ECS decrease, it's, so like, so saying, let's pause for a year and a half. A year and a half from now, we have this hole instead of this hole. So-
Yeah, and I'm not pausing, I'm, it's planning.
Yeah, no, I'm all for structural.
So, I, I think we need to plan for that anyway.
100%, yeah.
So, we need to plan for that. And so, unfortunately, the nut that we're talking about in a year and a half is going to be huge, but we need to start planning for it. I just don't know if there's some things that we could temporarily, I understand, you're right, the number is going to be, could be enormous.
Yeah, it could be, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right. Everybody's all set to move on? Okay, now we can move to item F, which is an update regarding the elementary redistricting for 2019, 20. Jeff, you have-
Um, yeah, I'm trying to, sitting here trying to think if, I believe last time I had reported out in relation to, um, our June fourteenth, um, kind of the, the step-up day, the elementaries. Um, now I'm thinking about it, yeah, I did, I did talk about this. Just to kind of recap, though, we, we have that set. Um, so our students from each of the three elementary schools will move up to their, their next, um, class. Um, and those from Flanders that are going to Haynes will get on a bus and will head over to Haynes and vice versa, students coming from Niantic Center to over. So, we're, we're working all that out. Um, buses are being solidified. I'm excited for that. I haven't heard a lot more from parents in relation to, you know, some of the redistricting components. The PTAs have been phenomenal. Um, they've really done a lot of activities, mingle, co-mingling, mixers.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. They, they, and I'm hoping, I haven't been able to attend one of the other obligations, so I was going to try and go. Actually, my wife went with my daughter with a Haynes one and she thought it was good. I, I couldn't make it. But, um, I'm hoping those are providing experiences of at least kids able to, to kind of mix, you know, together.
They've been very well attended from what I've been hearing, yes.
Which is, which is good. I'm hearing the same, that they, there've been quite a few people there. So, um, yeah, so that's where we're, where we're at right now with redistricting. Um, if anything new comes on the table, I will, you know, I'll let you know. Appreciate the feedback I'm getting from some of you in relation to, you know, anything you're, you're hearing from parents. We want to try and reach out as much as possible. And, uh, again, if we have parents that are still anxious or students that are anxious, we have our counselors, we have things that we can put in place to help. So, we will continue to monitor that closely.
Jeff, to chime in, we, Kim and I have our roadshow going.
Oh, yes, thanks.
Our last stop is at Niantic Center this Wednesday. So, we've had some parents that have come out for that. I think it's really important to us, and I thank Kim for really thinking about this, is that our message is exactly the same. It's all three locations. And what's been really neat is the parents that we've had, uh, the lowest number is usually of that school. It's parents from all the other elementary schools who are coming and listening, which is good and asking the questions. But great questions. But great questions, but our message is the same across all three locations. So we have Nyanx Center on Wednesday.
Good, excellent. Thank you both, to both of you for putting those on.
Yep. All right, everybody all set? Okay, we'll move on to instruction. We have for discussion, district data team report update, and Jeff, you have some...
Yeah, we've talked previously about starting to get into, starting to dive into, you know, the, the data components of the district, kind of some of the things that we're beginning to put in place and the work that the district data team has done. So Amy is going to do a little report out on that with some of our district data team members, two of them that are, that are here this evening. So I'm going to turn it over to the three of them.
We are going to have a...
Oh, yeah.
...in the back, just for a couple of slides. So, you know, with that, had asked me to comment, sort of talk about the district data team council work? And so with me tonight is Tracy Burns, as well as Kim Hill, both representing our data team. We also have several other members who I'll talk about in a minute from our slide, hard time of year in order to get people out, but also at the same time, I think both these ladies are deep in the data, because naturally, it's very articulate, they're relevant. I just want us to start out by sort of, one of the things we talk a lot about as the district data council, I want to be really clear, is a structure to how we talk about data. So currently, our district data council meets five times a year, 90 minutes each meeting. So I want to be clear, do that math, how much time we actually have together to get this work done, is not a lot, it's about a day, one full day over the course of a year. These are our committee members who we have representing the district data council. What's important to us as we run any district committee meeting is that we want equal representation, administration, high school, middle school, elementary representative of this work. So what I wanted to do for you tonight is give you a real quick snapshot in regards to our work so far and what the work has been. So what you see up there is sort of what we've worked on over the course of our time as a team together. And the first thing that you have is actual graphic in front of you that's called the multiple measures of data. So one of the things that we use as a core to our discussions is the fact that we don't just sit there and just look at math data or look at reading data. There's four lenses of data that we actually look at, and you can see the four lenses here, and this is what we use in order to round this. So my charge is to bring to the team all of these different lenses of data. So to bring them, in one meeting, I might bring demographic data, another meeting, we might go into perceptual data, another meeting, we might talk about student learning. So we're looking through different lenses so that we can understand the small and big data in regards to all these lenses, and we need to look at our system as a whole, not just through one lens. The work you can see here, so we started out with sort of us committing to the multiple measures and wanting to have that, that very lens conversation. Then the other piece of it is they are the team in which I bring school and district improvement planning to. They're the team that helps with C-RAC analysis when we complete that survey. We also assist me in analyzing the next generation accountability report, as well as analyzing attendance across the district, defining what a data culture is, as well as helping me to build Infinite Campus data warehouse. Again, I'd like to remind you, five meetings, nine meetings. With a very effective team structure in the sense that as a team, they are extremely calibrated and we are honed in on the work. We utilize protocols at every single meeting in order to make our way through the work in a pretty tight fashion. So this is really the work that we have set apart from us, and this is what I try to recruit people for. Last year, actually, as a data team, I think one of my aha's was, ooh, this is a team that can't dismantle after a year. Like, I need you to stay with me for one more year, so I had to do some of my recruiting from people to stay committed to this work as well. But it's, the expectation is, is that you serve in a district committee so that you can turn around and bring it back to your building. So I need you to know that this work that we have here, though it's district work, you're probably hearing some of the stuff that our administrators talked about in their school improvement plans, because that work carries over. There's a through line between both. It should be feeding and it should be a reciprocal relationship between both. So Grant, if you can go to the next slide. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over to both Tracy and Kim, and they're going to talk to you about some of the lenses. What we've done for you is we've identified on the left-hand side is really just a quick snapshot of analysis and sort of what we've come to conclusions about. And then on the right-hand side is just a quick snapshot of certain actions that we've taken based on the analysis that we've had in the conversation. Okay? Oh, talk now. To discuss about it, we said. So as Amy said, when we look at all this data and extensively analyze it using those four lenses, one of the lenses is demographics, and we noticed the following things. In terms of attendance, when we were looking, thinking about students, we noticed that students with disabilities had far higher rates of absences than students without disabilities. And also taking a look at those students, the primary reason for them being absent, if they were absent more than five days, was a personal vacation or some kind of extended travel. When we are looking at staff trends, we noticed that the, they were using their personal days and they were also using the sick days that were allotted to them. So we were looking at individuals in that, in that case, and we've noticed that that trend line has really stayed pretty much consistent over the years. So when we take a look at that, we as a district have implemented the following items. Students, families get robo calls across the district when they reach a certain, certain threshold in terms of attendance. We've revised the attendance letters across the district. And we've also formalized that process for focusing on supporting students and families who are chronically absent. In terms of staff, there are daily attendance reports that the administrators get, and then also central office of the district will provide feedback about those staff absences to the people, the administrators who approve them.
So I'm going to talk about student perceptions, and the first thing that the data team did back in the fall is, we looked at the Eastline Youth Survey that was completed by students in grades seven through 12, and it's published by the Southeastern Regional Action Council, and we found that there was an increase in the use of e-cigarettes, especially at the age of 14 and 15-year-olds. We also noticed that over 50% of the students indicated that they never really talked to teachers about tobacco and alcohol use, and that there was an increase of students experiencing self-harm, depression, and su- su- suicidal thoughts, sorry. And then we also noticed, like, 10% of the students reported feeling unsafe at school, and school programs were rated as one of the least preventative, whereas checking IDs and also the possibility of getting a license suspended, those were rated much higher. There was a report on a negative impact from social media on behavior in students from grades sevens and eights. So some of the actions that we have already implemented are that the health education, the scope and sequence for grades K through 12 has been revised. There's a social worker and a school psychologist in each building. We've implemented the digital citizenship modules in grades K through 12. We're having further analysis of the school climate, climate surveys, and then we're offering mentoring programs in grades four through eight. Okay, so another one of those lenses, those four lenses that Amy talked about, we have each year taken a look at student learning, clearly, and using that accountability report, we have noticed achievement gaps in math between the non, the non-high need students and high needs students. We've also noticed that gap as well in science, and we have taken a look at student growth in math at the elementary level, middle and high school level, that they don't, that it does not meet state indicators. And so the following actions we, as a district, also implemented, we've taken a look at, and let me back up, we, as Amy said, we take a look at this in terms of the district, but we all bring these, this information back to our districts, I mean, our buildings as well. And as a building, the administrators and the teachers at every grade level are talking about this as well, okay? So in terms of actions, we have implemented and monitored mathematics as a primary source at the elementary level. I can't read with my progressives. So let me just change this slide. In addition, we have mathematical, mathematics curriculum revision, analyzing student growth. In, in terms of math, we are piloting the eye-ready assessment at the elementary and middle school levels. We also have implemented math intervention at the high school level provided by mathematics teachers as part of the ARC program. The building level data analysis of math growth over, over time continues, and science curriculum revision has modernized curriculum implementation in the fall of 2019. And so just looking at school processes and the district, we really have talked about developing a data culture and analysis at each building level and with teachers and administrators and staff, faculty. And we've talked about how to manage complex change, and some of the things that really impact change are having a vision and getting consensus, building the skills needed, having incentives, and of course, resources, and then developing action plans. And we've looked at how to develop a vision so that we can share it and everybody knows it, and that we value data, and then developing buy-in or a shared accountability across the district. Some of the actions that we've taken so far are at the building and district, we've developed data maps and protocols for analyzing student data. We have bi-weekly or monthly data meetings at each building. There's professional development around data analysis and looking at root causes, and then protocols for conferring with students and parents to discuss data and, more importantly, to look at, you know, growth or to show growth, and then developing district-wide data warehouse, which Amy will give more information about that.
So those are sort of a glimpse inside our four lenses, some of the work the committee has done to date, a glimpse inside of some of the information that we've, and conclusions we've come to based on our analysis, and then ways that it's translated into action, right? Because we're not looking in 90 minutes to waste anyone's time, we're looking to use that time to really promote change and move us forward as a district and building based on what we're seeing, whether it be verse small or big data, if you will. With that, moving forward, I think the core to our data are our four things. So the work that we see, sort of see moving forward is a continuation, and actually Jeff and I were together today and really thought about maybe twine around with that improvement word in our plans. But the district improvement plans, the school improvement plans is a means of really closely looking at that growth over time, but also, for me, a big responsibility is continuing to make Infinite Campus a real warehouse as far as data is concerned, which therefore needs to focus on, on us really rebranding and honing in on Eastline and what is our data culture? What does that look like at the building level, at the district level, and just continuing to refine those skills? With that being said, so the future for us is really big data verse small data. Big data is telling us what, what's happening, whereas the small data is sort of telling us why. And I think the other piece of it, too, is that as far as the future is concerned, that for us, it's us continuing to, as a district, continue to calibrate that conversation and making sure that the conversations we're having at the district level are transcending to the building and then up as well, building level to the district level. With that being said, I'm going to show you an I in, which, this is like Stacy Muscarella's and my baby, if you will, at the last data meeting. So all my year's work so far with the data team has really led me to realize that we really need to develop this data warehouse, and through their work, they've led me into what should be stored there. And so I've given you a snapshot, and when I say data warehouse, I want to be really clear. It would live in Infinite Campus, it would be open to all of our educators within Infinite Campus. And basically, the one thing that I found is that if we're storing data, we're storing data almost on a spreadsheet. So it might live with one person, or it might live on, great, you ran that report on the 10th, but we're meeting on the 20th now, so we're missing 10 days. So the one thing I heard loud and clear from teachers is, if you're going to make us look at trends over time, or look at our practice, make it relevant and make it accurate. So with that being said, Stacy Muscarella has worked tirelessly with our other districts, and we've been feeding her sort of some of the reports that teachers want to see, and here's an example of one. So what this basically is, is that, so a teacher is about ready to look up, so any teacher could look up their course of students that they have, and on the left-hand side, and I apologize for the white awkwardness, I had to block out student names, so I'm sorry it didn't line up, but I had to privacy. So on the left-hand side, you'll see the top says grades, in the middle, it says behavior, and to the right, it says attendance. What that does is it takes all the grades that our teachers put in, the current student's attendance records, as well as any behavioral referrals attached to that kid, it combines them all together with ratings that we get to determine are relevant for what we value, and it gives them an overall score. What that does is it helps for teachers to sort of triangulate and look at their class through that lens that might help with the small data that they have. You know, I'm observing this kid, there's something that I know that I'm missing the vote on, you know, and then all of a sudden I look at them, I'm like, oh, well, actually, when I look at it behaviorally, there's been a lot going on over the last 10 days, you know what I mean? So sometimes you've got to step back as a teacher because you're so into it. This is a sample of one of our data warehouse screens. So one of the things that we did at the last data team meeting, which was culminating, is Stacy and I went to the team, basically showed them the keys to the castle and said, all right, this is what we got so far. What are we missing? What do you think teachers are going to want information on? What are they going to want at their fingertips? What are they going to want in the moment? And from a K-12 perspective, they gave us that, and Stacy and I got about two weeks of work, but that's okay. And part of it, though, is because we want to rebrand and open Infinite Campus in the fall so that it's got more information for teachers to be able to use in the moment. But our end game is that the data that we discuss at the district level can't just live with us in that room. It really should be available to the staff that we have here in order for them at any time, you want to bring up a student, at any time, you should be able to log in and pull in the behavioral report, the attendance report, their standardized test scores from the last three years. We're talking about ongoing benchmark assessments being in there. So if I'm an eighth grade teacher, I want to pull up Johnny from K to eighth grade. I don't want to have to worry about the fact that I wasn't the one that was handed that precious file, and that's why I don't know Johnny's journey. So there's been a lot of, this is huge for us and where we've come with this, and we will make that mark. I am convinced to stand on convocation stage and be able to open up that whole data visualization, because the other piece of it is that it creates these graphs for teachers. But I think, and I think this is part of why Jeff and I have come tonight, is to let you know, none of this would be here without this team. So over the course of five meetings, over the course of two and a half years totaling about 12 and a half meetings, we've come to this. So it's pretty amazing as far as what their input has helped, and as well as what's, the conversations have been at the building level and our administration for facilitating those conversations as well. So Jeff thought it'd be a good way for us to get out there. This is how we are viewing data currently. This is where we're heading as far as future, meaning fall convocation, and having more of that available, but also at the same time, not losing track for our teachers, the value of small data. And not making, we don't want to go around also reinforcing that students are just this number, and how do we talk about triangulation in a really holistic way? We have work to do, don't get me wrong. I mean, I got my, don't get me wrong, the committee holds me accountable, too, like, you need to re-message this. I mean, there's work to do, I'm by no means saying that this is clean, but there's a lot of good work happening in a good direction. So we just wanted to bring this to you.
So, I guess, find the slide. On your slide about computer, student learning, the math. As a board, we talked about this during budget season, how we needed the extra help for math. And knowing how we were going to go into budget season, we took it out. for math. And knowing how we were going to go into budget season, we took it out. I know we didn't want to take it out, but looking at what happened, it had to get cut. I'd like to see it put back because reading your slide on student learning, we need to put it back. And I know it took us a little while to get the reading help a couple of years ago in the budget. It took us a couple of cycles to find the time. Is there anything we could be doing to keep, put it in there with the limited resources that we have? Anything? Because I know it's a struggle for us, like reading was a couple of years ago.
So I think it's just hard now because of the administrative level and I'm sure from administrative level, it's hard to consider a new when you're trying to save current.
Right.
So that that creates a cultural.
But I also know that math is really important in life. And it's one of those things that everyone should have some kind of knowledge of.
Maybe it becomes an untouchable next year, Jamie, you know, as we look at 2021 budget. If you've got those items that we had in issues budget, which we're just leaving in place, we're not touching. Maybe math, collectively, we look at it even in a deeper lens and it becomes an untouchable.
Well, during the summertime too, we're going to be running the summer program, which is tuition-based, which is now doubled in size, right? So I mean, that was brought on because we only had a special program through the summertime. So it really left out a lot of kids that were kind of on that hinge of needing maybe more or had challenges with regression. So I think that having those opportunities for families and children, I think that that would be, I think it's going to be helpful, which is better than what we've had in the past. So I think that that will be able to help. But I am really loving that the point where you have all of the information that everybody is, can have it and be accessible to you. I mean, I remember when this was just a conversation and now you ladies are really, everyone is really putting it into place and it's exciting and it's really going to help a lot of kids and the teachers right here in the district. So bravo for all of your work.
Bring it.
You do an incredible job.
Bill?
No, go ahead, Bill.
Okay. No, I had a few questions. First of all, obviously, you left those meetings with homework because you got quite a bit done.
Yeah.
That didn't happen all of your meeting time. So this is pretty impressive. A couple of things stood out for me that almost tripled the rate of suicidal thoughts and self-harm. That's that's kind of alarming, especially, I mean, I guess if, you know, if you went from one kid to three kids, that's really bad still. But if you went from 10 kids to 30 kids, that's, I mean, I don't know what the initial data was. And I don't know how frequent, is that an annual survey that we get?
Yes, every other.
Every other year. Okay. So that was over two years. Okay. That, to me, that's scary. Couple other questions I had. This looks really cool and impressive, but it makes absolutely no sense to me, this chart that you showed, because there's nothing on the
It's students.
Student names.
Student names.
Yeah.
I understand the names aren't there, but is that?
What does it tell me?
Is that like, does that represent a class list and these are?
So each one of those lines is a difference.
Okay.
Is it real data?
Snapshot of.
So you, how many, how many, how many kids do you have, I mean, real data?
Every kid.
Every kid. So this is, so you have this, okay, good. Sorry, Bill.
So, all right, so this represents a class and, you know, Johnny's at the top of the list, whatever, the bottom of the list, and this is how they compare with the rest. Wow, that's quite a variation in whatever that data is that we're looking at.
Right. So the first category is grades. The second is behavior and the third is attendance. So if you think about it, that's the three data points we ask teachers to put into Infinite Campus. Accurate grades, calibrated and accurate behavioral data, and attendance. Who's there? When? So that's the accurate data. Now, we get to determine the percentage of value we place in buildings. So what we get to do is, you know, about the high school, they decide that they really value attendance because it's credit bearing. They could make credit 50% and they could make behavior and grades 25 and 25 because that's of value at that level. Whereas at the elementary, we could tweak it somewhere else because we're like, well, attendance isn't as much but that behavioral piece right out of the gate. So we're allowed to at the elementary, middle, high flux, those percentage that we put there. But the other is, is for a teacher who I get, I get, I'm about ready to get my new class list at the hall. I have a new group of kiddos. It will help tell me a little bit of a story, but also this is every, this is in the moment data. Do you have a behavioral referral that happens an hour ago? You walk into a weekly data team, it's on behavior. You can put this up on the backdrop and right there is the, is the input of it.
So I guess now that sparked, I had another question, but I had two more questions. One is that we had a conversation earlier about data and the accuracy of data on, you know, we can take our spreadsheet and things that got shifted around. And so how, what safeguards or what protocols are being put in place so that we are making sure that the data that we're collecting, how are we going about doing that to further accuracy?
The short answer is Stacy Muscarella. In the sense that she runs reports on Infinite Campus every day. And she is actually calling, both calling administrative assistance in regards to attendance, or she's code-calling in regards to behavior. Or over a market period, when we find out from the principals, they give a two-week window for grading. When that two-week window passes, she can pull a report of any teachers who have not put, when the last time was that they put grades in, when they haven't, and can provide that at any time. So that was really the whole role of, if we were going to universal or centralize anything, that was why we needed to move Stacy from her past position to this because this would have gotten nowhere.
Right.
Because what we, how we talk in my office is there's a data inputter and there's a data manager. Stacy manages the data in the sense that she's constantly running reports off of it, running our daily attendance report, God, is this person really out of F M L A? Thought I just saw them. What's going on? You know what I mean? Like it's, it's somebody constantly running reports as far as that usage is concerned. And then us being able to provide it back to the administration and/or it's a one-on-one call in regards to the accuracy.
So that, that and what you just said leads to the next question. So what kind of burden is this putting on the teachers in terms of, okay, I've got to enter five bits of additional data daily or, you know, you're talking about this is live information. So, you know, are they getting caught up? I know I got to put Johnny's grading for behavior today and the attendance. You know, sometimes as a teacher, I know sometimes the bell rings for my classes. Oh, crap, I didn't take attendance. You got so caught up in your teaching that you, you know, so I'm just trying to say, oh, man, every day I got to fill in category A, B, C and try to get it accurate.
So we try and do data input on the shoulders of our administrative assistants. And then we try to have the expectation within teachers is to really mostly be the grades and the attendance piece of it. Usually, the behavior has a system to it. So if it's working his way back into Infinite Campus, usually it might be a referral process. It might be they ended up going to so-and-so. And every summer, we ask the principals, we give them all the categories in Infinite Campus that data needs to be inputted in and we ask them who's responsible for it in every single building. So then Stacy sets up groups. So then she knows, okay, I'm noticing that there seems to be a trend in regards to behavioral data not going in for 48 hours. She will just talk to the administrative assistants who are involved and responsible for data inputting of behavior. That's it. She's only talking to a group of five rather than CCing and copying everybody. So we try to keep a lot of those processes at the administrative assistant or administrator level as far as input. And then we help with feedback and management. I'm not to say, that's not to say that teachers are just as engaging as you are and are like it's lunchtime and they're like, oh, yeah, you know what I mean? But the more we use it, it's funny because we go to the schools.
Developing habits too.
Yeah. The more they use it, the more accountability they'll see because they won't like walking in the room looking at this chart and it not being accurate.
Yeah.
They'll start doing their own corrective action because they'll start seeing, what do you need? What do you need attendance? I've had this kid for a month. He does it all day. What's going on there? Oh, wait a minute. I never marked him as president for the last 10 days. So that's why he's up there. So it will be, a lot of systems have offered that as advice. The more they see the data and use it, the more the, which is why it's important that we're building the reports that the team is telling us to report.
Yeah.
We're asking, what do you want to see? What is it that you want to see as far as reports? Because if it's not useful to them, we're doing it for nothing. But this is the central thing that we're targeting. And about how often are teachers consulting this?
Like, is there an expectation?
Right now, this is not live.
Not live. Is there going to be an expectation for like when teachers are going to go through and do like?
So I'm a big fan of sort of piloting things before committing to set structures. So I'm really big on piloting them. And again, this would be a team that I turn around and say, okay, so we just went, like I left them at their last meeting, go, and this is going to be done. Come back or I'm watering my convocation. But they would be the team that I turn around and say, okay, so let's talk about this. Now teachers are able to go in there and they're able to see 15 more charts and stuff and information on their students that they couldn't see before. How long should I let them get their feet wet with it? What do you think in regards to piloting? This would be the team I would bring that to and say, help me, help me navigate that from a K-12 perspective. What does that look like?
Got it. And is this platform part of Infinite Campus or is this a separate tool?
No. So when teachers on their sidebar, when they're logged into the instructional side of campus, all the way on the left will be all the data visualization.
Got it.
Yep.
Can you explain what the green, red, yellow means? I mean, I'm assuming this is color. I'm trying to figure out what this is telling us and I don't really get it.
So, I know because of privacy. So within the green, okay, within the green, it means that we set the criteria of what a green is at the start of the year.
That's good.
So we're able to say, okay, a kid in the green has three or less behavioral referrals.
So the green is good?
Yes. Okay. But again, that's where the high school, I'll be able to turn to high school and say, what do you want? Your category is S. What do you want?
And then the red is bad and the yellow is warning.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Got it. So zero.
Hundred percent bad. I feel bad for that. Not just bad, he's a hundred percent bad.
And zero percent is the best, right?
Yes.
Yes. That means there's nothing in that category. Got it. Okay. That's what I thought.
He stopped, he's failing, and he was not there.
Yeah, Ken just brought up a good point. He's not a hundred percent bad. We're a hundred percent worried. This is just the level of work that we've heard from teachers is stop asking me to collect data or stop asking me to assess stuff like kids have not used it or not have access to it. So this is our, one of our answers to it.
That's what these are. So this is their percentage of behavioral rates.
You sort of answered it as far as validating the data. So how do teachers, if they see a discrepancy, how do they go about correcting it? Do they do it themselves or they're just reporting to the data?
So you always want to keep your data inputter as the same so you don't have as much as variability in practice. Because as it is right now, you got to figure, we're asking every teacher on an individual level to do attendance and to do grades. So that's immediately going to create, because I mean, I can run a report now, like the whole social studies department at the high school, of the three teachers that teach the same course and what their grade variance is. Now, they haven't had access to that. But for all I know, if the department turns around and says, hey, listen, we're doing a goal this year around grading and really calibrating and looking at our students and looking at our population, that is something that I could open to them. But we want to keep that inputter the same person. So the teacher, I mean, they can, they can do the attendance and grades piece of it. And over time, what we may find is teachers may want more permissions. But I think to Bill's point, is we're looking to give them access to the information in a cleaner way, not add on to certain expectations that we already have with them. So we like to keep it safe.
Yeah, I just mean from like a perspective, the teacher, teacher knows that that's incorrect. You know, it's like, oh, they don't have a behavioral problem. And it's showing that, you know, I guess they just reach out to that data coordinator and figure out what's going on.
Yeah, because think about that person's never going to do a better job if they never know, because somebody's always going to be in another room just correcting it for them. But meanwhile, their responsibility is to have accurate data from the get-go because I'm about ready to walk into a meeting talking about this kid. Now I'm about ready to make educational calls for this kid and it's inaccurate.
Just a comment about, back to the math for a minute. I noticed that the achievement gap is between the non-high-needs and the high-needs kids, which means like our free and reduced lunch, right? So back to Candace's comment about the summer school, right? Clearly, the kids who are going to get the advantage of the extra math are not those children because they have to pay. And so those are obviously families that can't afford to spend the money in the summer for their kids to get the math and the science enrichment, which then makes the gap even wider. So my suggestion would be that we perhaps reach out to the families who we think their kids could really benefit if these classes are made for those kids, not just kids who are high flyers, and offer them scholarships to attend our summer program. That, because, you know, Candace is right that, you know, anything we do in the summer is helpful, but this data is telling us that it's the high-needs kids that really need this help and they're not the kids who are going to be getting it. So I'd like to see us do some kind of scholarship, even if it means we go to the PCAs or whatever.
We have, we have had principal sponsor scholarships to families before, certain ones that they bound. And then we also have the extended school year program as well. So we might help the students in our teaching months or whatever.
Right. That's for special, special education. I'm talking like free and reduced lunch kids.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, even if that meant we had an added class.
Okay.
Just a thought. Oh, and then on the slide on attendance, I didn't understand what that thing said about staff attendance. I didn't understand what it meant.
So we have, we have a through trend line as far as year to year, our staff taking their personal as well as the sick days that are allotted to them.
But do we know what person? But aren't they allotted like 15 days a year? And so that, you're not saying that every single teacher takes 15 days a year?
No, no.
What are you saying? That was what I didn't get.
No. What we're saying is that there's a trend that staff take them. That's what we saw, that staff are taking the personal days or taking the sick days. We're not saying how many, we're not adding any judgment to it. That staff are taking those days. So what that means is that we consistently need to budget for them because we are consistently seeing those days used. So therefore, one of the things that we've been doing as far as at the district level is that if we see those days being used, is looking at them further, which led us to some of the negotiations conversation that we had in regards to defining what personal days are and things of that nature.
And sub-coverage as well. But does our data tell us what percentage of our staff say is taking, like if they get 15 sick days, what percentage of our staff is, say, taking more than five a year, more than 10 a year?
Yeah. So I, I have all that data and I did not feel because of.
Right. I get it. But we didn't have that data.
Yes. I did not feel that that, I didn't want to go that deep.
Right. No, I get it. Because we do have that data.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Very good. Very good. Excellent.
Thank you.
Amazing progress.
Yeah.
That's fantastic.
Okay, let's see. We're up to school project update. This is the elementary school project. Jeff, do you have any big picture?
No. We had our building committee meeting last week. Moving forward with, you know, the, we figured that the Hanes mitigation at this point, we had so much rain in April and May, unprecedented rain, that we haven't had one single issue that we. that we attributed that, you know, to instruction, that, you know, the ripping up the parking lot last summer. So, moving forward with not putting in that mitigation component, which, you know, brought some money back into our overall budget, which was a good thing. That was probably one of the biggest ones, you know, Bill and Tim on this.
Yeah.
Tim's got his slides that he had put together, wanted to look at the contingency.
Yeah, I was just, what we're going to try to do is just continue to keep this slide deck active after every building committee meeting, so you know exactly where, where all the money stands. And so, I don't know if people got that open or.
I have copies here too, if you want a hard copy.
Yeah. Anybody want a hard copy?
I have a hard copy.
Yeah.
Sure.
So, the not so, the exciting news is that as of April 22nd, not April 22nd, that'd be May, um, did she correct?
It's of April.
No, she didn't. Yeah. It's as of last week, May, whatever the building committee meeting day was, 18th, I think. That we're down now to only $64,000 in the overall contingency money for both the owner's contingency and the GMP contingency. So, so we've, you know, really eaten into a lot, a lot of that. And we updated a little bit on the slide number three, the major items that are kind of contributing to that, including which includes the entrance skylights for Niantic Center and the parking lights for Niantic Center as well, which was another $70,000. So, so we really have, have been going through the, through the contingency money. And as Jeff said on slide four, the update, there is some, some good news, and that is is that we have, that because we haven't seen any water issues at Lilly B. Haynes, we're going to not have to spend $220,000 to seal the floors, which is great news. The other great news is that we were anticipating that we might have to spend up to $100,000 improving the storm drain system for the roof. And that is not going to have to, not have to occur. So, that's cost avoidance. The, the big, the great news is, is that we went out to bid on Flanders' roof, and we budgeted a million, $1,035,000 for re-roofing Flanders' roof. The bids came in much lower. Unfortunately, we have to go back out to bid because the bid package was confusing in terms of how much pitch was needed for the roof. And there was an inconsistency, so it was decided, the building committee decided that it had to go back out to rebid. On one hand, that, that costs time. On the other hand, the bids will probably come in lower, because the pitch, the pitch doesn't have to be as, all that much. And the people that were bidding now know where the other people were bidding. So, so, so we, so, so that's good news. And then we also have out to bid currently is the masonry work for the exterior of Niantic Center, which we had budgeted $200,000 for. And I'm, I'm, it's, it's hard to predict, but I'm hoping that the bids are going to come in much less than $200,000. I'm hoping that they come in around $100,000. So, we do have a total with those items of objection of up to $300,000 in savings, which is, which is great, great news. So, if you go to the next slide, kind of summarizes all the money that we've got left for the project. So, our typical, the, the actual contingency money is about $64,000. We have cost savings on the GMP allowances that are up to about, well, they're up to $300,000, we're hoping for. And then the contractor allowance savings is still projected to be about $300,000. So, you add all those up, so we actually have $664,000 and not touching the furniture budget. Okay? So, that's good news. Okay? And so, we'll just, we'll continue to monitor, we're, you know, we're in, we're in the middle of phase three. I don't anticipate many surprises in phase four.
I don't either. This phase three was probably our biggest, it was our biggest.
Yeah.
Biggest component, so.
So, we've had, there's some, yeah, some, some pretty good, pretty good, pretty good news. And everything's on schedule with the project, with excitement for Lilly, for Lilly B. Haynes. That's the exciting one, because we still have some more abatement work that has to be done in the old gang locker room that's, that was in that one wing. And that's got a monkey wrench on the, on the schedule.
Yeah, supposed to get done over April vacation, there just wasn't enough time. Otherwise, if they'd tried to do it, we potentially wouldn't have opened school back up, right at April vacation.
Yeah. Now, some of us went on tours. I know Ryan, Eric, myself, and John, and where am I going? Is anybody else?
I went.
Barbara went. Yeah, Barbara went. Yeah. And took a look at, some of us looked at Niantic Center and Lilly B. Haynes. And then this afternoon, John and I, Jeff, and some of the administrative team, looked at Flanders'. But where it's done, looks pretty good.
It's good.
Looks good.
Yeah.
Where it's not done, it's, I don't know, it's amazing that they can pull all this together in a lot of time, but it's pretty exciting, so.
I know many of you, you know, different schedules and commitments, so, you know, if you, if you do want to still take a look, so if you want to meet me early one morning or, you know, an afternoon, or something works for you with your schedule or a certain day, just let me know. We can work around that, and I can work to clear my calendar, and we can head over and just take a tour.
Yeah.
Sometimes with just two of us or three of us, it can go a lot quicker too. And we can hit two schools or one school or through all three, so.
We did at the, I can't remember if it was the last board meeting or the board meeting before. We did talk about the Niantic Center school skylight.
Two meetings.
Two meetings ago. Zero, thank you. Two meetings ago.
And it's 43, it was budgeted, it's $43,000 to replace that skylight. And I asked Joe to give me a breakdown a little bit, just on why that's so much. And it, it was interesting, in fact, John was, was, heard, heard kind of the synopsis from him. The material, the glass is going to cost about $11,000, okay? You have to use, multiple lifts have to be brought in, and that's a cost of $3,000. It's the labor is the big cost. And it's about $22,000 to do, to do the work, which at about $80 an hour for it, it's about six to seven people for a work week to, to, to get up there, dismantle it, pull it out, get it all ready, and then, and then to put in the new, the brand new, the new glass, and then reseal everything up and all that. So, it's, it's expensive, but it's, you know, they laid it all out. So, I just wanted to, I mean, you know, because I had the same, we all had the reaction of like, how can that cost that much? And then when you look, now, what, what will be done is, and actually Joe has a sample of the, of the glass and so forth, it will be done exactly correctly. So, it's not going to, three, three years from now, it's not going to have mold and algae growing inside it. So, so that's, that's.
Can you maybe give, because until we went, I, the kids went to Lilly B., so I, I don't, I didn't remember the skylight at Niantic Center. When you said skylight, I was thinking like something I might have in my home or something, not.
No, it's the entrance glass.
Maybe give people the order of magnitude of how big this thing is.
It's where you walk in through the first, the first set of doors into the main entrance for Niantic Center, and you look up, there's a, there's a, it's all glass.
So, it's almost half the size of this room.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's a, yeah, it's a, it's a great big entry space.
Yeah.
And, and, and you look up, and it's cracked.
Yeah.
It has mold growing in it, it has green algae, and.
Leaking.
And leaking, and.
Other than that, it's.
It's fine. It's great.
The other thing, the other thing that's really interesting is, is that they've gotten, they've gutted the, the old, old part of Niantic Center.
I know.
And so, it's like a, it's like a history trip up there. Oh, my gosh. It's just, it's, it's fascinating, because it's, it's over, it's about 100 years old.
Nineteen twenties.
Nineteen twenties, yes.
About 100 years old. So, anyway, that's, that's all I had. Anything else?
I don't know. I think we're on, on target again, and, you know, it's just getting everybody out of there at the end of the school year and jumping into the summer work, so.
Okay. Okay. Item C that we added, which was the.
Consent agenda.
Italy trip.
The consent, from the consent agenda.
No, you're not. Oh, yes. You're right. I wrote it here, but not here. Yep.
Just a question.
So, that's the, that's the East Lime High School out-of-country field trip to Italy, which is scheduled for June 20.
June something.
Yeah, June, yeah, June 28th through July.
The year is wrong on our thing.
That's, you know, I just was looking at it.
It says 2019, but it's actually 20.
It's 20. It's a year, it's a year from now.
Right.
Oh, good catch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that, yeah, that's the.
Oh, I didn't even notice that.
Yeah, no, I, I just looked at the attachment.
She noticed all the little things.
The attachment says 20, but public content on the, on our notes says 2019.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Fix that for the minutes, adjust that.
Eric, you had a question?
Yeah, my only question was, and it looks like a great trip, and I, I support it, is why was Italy chosen, or what's the significance of going to Italy? Do we, I don't, we normally.
Latin class.
What's that?
It's Latin.
It's like 20. Yeah, it's Latin.
They've been doing it for.
They've been doing it for like 35 years.
Where do you say Latin class? I was looking.
It's a Latin teacher.
Did you?
It says East Lime High School Latin teacher Sherry Meyer.
Yeah.
It's in parentheses.
I took the Latin class. Say that.
It says summary of issue.
My parents were lovely.
As well as purpose of the trip.
Did you open the attachment?
I did, yeah. I looked through the whole thing. I was trying to figure out why, why Italy, which I have no problem, and good cultural visit, and fantastic, I just couldn't, didn't see that piece, yeah. Okay.
All right.
That's all I needed. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, any other comments? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the East Lime High School out-of-country field trip to Italy from June 28th to July 8th. Let me just make sure I've got those date rates. I don't know. 20, 20.
20, 20.
20.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Passed or standing? Okay? Get out of that. Okay, so, whoa, whoa, what happened?
Jumped in.
Secretaries.
My dexterity starts to fade after nine o'clock. Okay, so we're up to proposed East Lime Public School secretarial contract. Jeff, you on?
Yeah, I mean, everybody had a chance. We did some review on this at a prior, prior meeting. So, just need to bring it forward to you all for final approval, so we can move forward. And I want to thank the committee members that, you know, were part of the process as well and, and their work.
Okay. Would we like to make a motion?
Okay, I have a question.
Go ahead and ask.
Okay. Which I hate, I hate to do. In the light of the budget situation that we're in, I guess I'm, I'm more concerned about signing up on these three-year deals, that as I look at the numbers, that we're not going to get, we're probably not going to get increases to cover this, which means if we don't get increases to cover this, then we have to find savings elsewhere. And that's a concern. I know we're, this is late to bring it up, and I understand, having been on the teachers' negotiations and then bring it forward, when you're not part of the negotiation, you don't know what we gave up and all those other things, I understand that. That's my only concern, that we're, we're signing up for something that, can we afford it next year and the year after? I don't know what people think.
Barbara, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I understand where you're coming from, but I think when you, when you look at the big picture, right, we're probably at the point with budgets where increases in staff contracts will probably be accompanied by decrease in staff. That we can't, if we, we negotiated in good faith with this bargaining unit.
Yeah.
So, we can't really go back. But if we have to, because we need to save money, we might have to do a reduction in force. And as, as much as we hate that, there will come a point, like when, what John was talking about, where if the ECS money gets cut more, and we have to pay for teacher, part of the teacher retirement, if we want to continue to be able to provide a quality education to kids and give them like the math, or whatever it is, we may, even though we hate to do it, have to do it with fewer people. Or, the next time we go to the bargaining table, that's what we say to staff. If we give you this, which we really can't afford, then that may mean that we have to cut some of you. And maybe staff will say, okay, we'll take less if it means we all can stay. But I think we're sort of at that point where everybody kind of has to realize that we're going to run out of places to cut. And we're not going to have any choice if we want to continue to give staff some kind of an increase, that we may not be able to do that with the number of people that we have, even though, yes, we all agree that every single one of those people is valuable, but money only goes so far. So, I hear what you're saying, and I agree. It would be nice if we could go back to everybody and say, can you take less? But we can't really do that because we negotiated in good faith. And I will remind everybody that one of the things on Jeff's list of things of possible cuts was a secretarial position. And there are a few places in the district where we have a large number of secretaries, so that's a possibility.
The library assistants at the elementary level are part of the secretary bargaining group as well.
Right. And you also have them on the list, so.
So, maybe, maybe it's just, let's, going forward and all of us, I don't, I don't remember who's up next for negotiating, but I think we just have to go in knowing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The likelihood of getting 2% or above that is probably unlikely. So, if we're, if we give more money, then it might be less people, or we're cutting elsewhere.
Yep.
Yep.
But there were less than 2% on that contract.
Well, it's.
Not over three years.
Yeah, and then I don't know how many are in the step eight. Like, step eight is going up to 2.5%. So, I don't know where people, I don't, I don't know what the mix is.
Was that, I thought that was step increase, not the.
No, it can't.
By moving to the step you're going up, but not by, if you're.
We did provide step advancement in each of the, each of the three years.
Right. Right.
Yep.
Jamie?
So I know this was part of our discussion at our meeting last week, and I'd like to just refresh everyone's memory if we forgot. But Jeff Provost brought up a very good idea that I don't see in here, because I know we've taken it out, but perhaps putting it back in is the insurance payoff.
Yeah.
No, I know that, but I'm just, before we go doing anything, it was a discussion that we had last week. And I don't, honestly, I haven't been following the secretary contract because I'm not on it, so I don't know when your last negotiation meeting was.
Yeah.
But it, it would be something for us to consider to put back in the contract to help us with those cuts.
Okay, so. Jeff, you have anything?
No, I mean, I, we, we spent, I think, quite a bit of time on this reviewing, both this and the next item. So, you know, I, at this point, I think all valid points, and I think right, Eric, in moving forward. We have, we have a reprieve next year. We don't have any negotiations next year. But that'll give us a good sense, I think, for the coming years as to, you know, where we'll be going.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so Barbara, you want to make a motion?
Okay.
I guess just to approve.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, it's on your agenda detail.
My, my thing is working really slowly. Oh, here we go. I got it. All right. Okay, make a motion that a board, that the board approve the proposed East Lime Public Schools secretarial contract for 7-1-19 through 6-30-22.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll second it.
Tim.
Discussion, more discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, okay, passes, you know, simply. The next item is a proposed East Lime Public Schools supplemental stipend position contract for July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022.
Yeah, and again, I want to thank the committee, subcommittee members that, you know, were, were part of.
Jeff, who's on that subcommittee?
Um, Eric.
Eric?
It's Candace.
Candace? I think Candace.
Candace is on it.
Joe, is Joe?
Was Candace and I primarily.
Yeah, there's one other, but it might have been Joe. But Eric and Candace primarily. I thank them for their work as well as the association. We had quite a few, I think we had four or five, four meetings, I think it was, in, in total. So a lot of work went into it.
Teachers on that?
Teachers?
Were there any teachers on that? No teachers, but bargaining union?
Their association representation.
So there was a union representative there?
Yes, yes, association was represented, yep. And that was all part of the charge that was put forward.
I'm just making sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd recommend, you know, us moving forward with.
Yeah.
With the stipend agreement.
Yep. Okay, so.
Last question?
Yeah, sure.
What is the difference in total output in this supplemental agreement as opposed to our old supplemental agreement?
What do you mean by total output?
Monetary output.
Costs. It was a wash.
Wash, yeah.
It's a wash?
It's a wash. It was a wash in the end, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Would anybody like to make a motion on this one?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to move that the board approved the proposed East Lime Public Schools supplemental stipend positions contract for 7-1-19 through 6-30-22.
Is there a second?
I second.
Eric seconded. Any more discussion on this one? Nope. Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, and that passes. And the last item is the, oh, yeah, is the non-renewable of the non-tenured certified staff due to possible budget reductions resulting, due to the, you know, budget situation for the coming year. And so we have to, if we're going to, we have to officially take action to notify those folks.
Exactly, yes. And I'm hopeful that, once the referendum, I'm going to be positive that it passes Thursday, we will immediately issue a letter to them, you know, reinstating their positions.
Right.
As really a precaution as it pertains to additional cuts as necessary, but.
Yep.
And we had four, four staff members that we were looking at.
Yeah. And do we, this is the motion?
That's the motion.
Do we read the name, we read the names of the people too, right?
We, we have in the past.
Yeah, that's right. That's why, yeah.
Yeah, you're technically supposed to. I don't like to, but we're technically supposed to.
Okay. So.
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, sure, absolutely.
So are we sending this to, oh, so we're only sending it to the four least senior, non-tenured?
Exactly. I already notified.
Not all the non-tenured.
No, 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 just these four.
Just four.
That's it. I didn't do any deeper than that.
Okay, and that was with the idea that that would cover the 250,000?
That was the idea of, if there was an additional, if the referendum failed and there was additional cuts, this would be.
Okay.
And not knowing what that number would be, what the reduction could be. It's just an additional precaution, which we've done in the past.
You don't want to put the world language teacher on that list?
At this point, no, the seniority-based. This is our, our lowest seniority. She's.
She has more seniority than most teachers.
And as well as, you know, world language-wise, which or which direction we were going with that, so.
Okay, I just thought it might be nice for her to know.
We've, we've talked to her.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that's the motion? These folks know that it's precautionary.
Yes, they've all been notified. They've all been spoken to, and they've all been, you know, we will.
You want me to read it?
No, I'll read it. I don't like to read it.
I don't like the optics of it.
Yeah, I don't either.
We do it a lot.
Yeah, we do it.
We do it every year.
Because there's a deadline date that you have to do it by?
Because I always pull up the previous years to look.
Do you know the referendum's going to be on Thursday?
Because if you don't do it by a certain date, you get in trouble.
It's state law, yeah.
Some districts tell every single non-tenured teacher.
I remember years ago, years ago, we used to send them out to every single non-tenured.
It just makes me really uncomfortable.
It is uncomfortable, and we do the same thing. This same conversation happens every year as well.
Right, we talk about this.
It's an awful conversation. I hate this.
I think Lee should read the motion.
No, no. Only you, Jamie.
I vote no.
I'm confident we're going to give them letters Friday.
I would like, I'd really not like to, but I'm moving that the Contract of Employment for the Four Least Senior Non-Tenured Certified Staff Members not be renewed for the following year upon its expiration at the end of the 2018-2019 school year, and that the Superintendent of Schools is directed to advise such persons in writing of this action as presented. Those teachers are as follows. Do I have to read their schedule and everything or just their names?
Just their names.
Just their names, yeah.
Julie Bartoli, LaShawn Kinsman, Tara Chowski, and Kathy Pinder.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think Barbara seconded. Any more discussion?
Can I just, for my own understanding, because this is still kind of like blowing my mind a little bit, what's the impact of not doing this?
The impact is then you have to go through a full, basically, yeah, you have to, you're, by doing it this way, it's, we've already notified them, it's, it's a cleaner way to.
So they've already had conversations about this?
Everybody's been spoken to.
And assuming the referendum passes on Thursday.
Then we restate a letter to them, exactly. Otherwise, you have to go through the whole form of process.
When I first came on the board, we had a bad budget cycle, and we sent them out to every single non-tenured teacher. So we sent out like 30 of them.
I think Groton did that last year.
Yeah, yes, yes.
A lot of districts do. A lot of districts.
But you have to do it by law by a certain date.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that.
Yeah.
I'm going to change the state law.
Well, you better get lobbying.
Okay. All right, all right, everybody, everybody good? Everybody cool? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Yeah.
Aye, opposed, one opposed, abstained, okay, passes. Whatever that count is.
It doesn't matter.
Two, four.
Two, four, five, six, seven to one.
Seven to one. Okay, good. That concludes the discussion action items for the evening. Administration reports, which I know will be.
Short and sweet.
Equally short.
Yes, equally short, a couple of real quick items. Friday, this coming Friday, May 24th, Flanders School and Central Office will have zero power.
Yes.
They're running a new line in, so we will have no phones, we will have nothing. So just a heads up, we'll notify parents if they need to get in touch with Central Office.
How will that affect your PD day?
Well, we're, we're working with our staff. Some are going to be working, you know, in a closet where there's light.
In a closet, did you just say?
Let me preface that. We know where a lot of people are moving in Central Office, so they're working on some packing items.
That's right.
We have the wellness, the wellness fair is starting at 11 o'clock, so, you know, some people are going to be doing some paperwork from home.
I thought you said closets, so I'm just trying to clarify.
Diane, the center is posting all of our elementary teachers.
All of the staff will be over at night.
Wondering about them. Good, okay.
I got the headlamp.
Growing tired.
Front office is small.
So that will be on Friday. I will be posting tomorrow probably for a new high school assistant principal, Lori Zaneski. I know Lori's not here, but Lori has, her retirement, we will miss her. She's been a wonderful individual at the high school and administrator at the high school. So maybe at some point, you know, we can recognize her, say goodbye to her in some capacity. But she'll be part of the.
Retirement party.
Retirement party, which is a week from this Thursday, too. So that will be great. And then lastly, just a shout out to our three elementary art teachers. They did a combined art show, which they did at the middle school in the cafeteria last week, which was awesome. It was really a, a cool thing to see, bringing them together and seeing all those parents from the three schools coming today. It was new. It was something they hadn't done before, so it was, it was a neat piece.
But that's a lot of moving parts.
Yeah, it really was. A lot of setup, a lot of organization. But, you know, Elena, Linda, and you and Melissa and Jeff, you know, you're all part of that, so kudos. I wanted to throw that out there to our three elementary art teachers and staff. That's it. That's all I have.
Mine's really quick. So Camp Phenomenon that we run.
Mm-hmm.
We are excited to say that after a meeting, you'll get a copy tomorrow. I put on Lee to send the board members a flyer that will go out. We're waiting on one date change. We're expanding it this year in the sense that Diane and Lisa are both going to offer the Camp Phenomenon for two weeks, half-days for students entering grades two to four. We actually have the opportunity of one of our middle school teachers to offer robotics camp for grades, students going into grades five and six for two weeks. It's Linda Nastri at the middle school. Then we also have the opportunity for Michelle Jeff offered to run a STEAM camp for students entering grades six to seven. So it's nice because we're adding that middle schooling. I did have two high school teachers also contact me, but unfortunately with the summer they couldn't, but did ask to stay in reserve, so it's nice. We might be able to offer some science-based.
That's really awesome.
Academic integration camps.
Is Ms. Jeff's camp going to be two weeks too, or?
I'm sorry?
Two weeks for Ms. Jeff's camp too, the STEAM camp?
First, it's going to be one week, actually.
And you said STEAM or STEM?
STEAM.
Okay.
Yeah, camp. First students entering grades six and seven, so that flyer will go out. So those are, again, revenue-based programs.
Excellent.
Very good.
Eric? Arianna? Present? All right, committee reports. There was a AAA committee meeting this afternoon, and there were two topics on the agenda. One consumed most of the meeting, which was field, field trip policies and regulations. We just started conversations around that in terms of defining it in response to work that's going on through Amy and the curriculum committees at the, at the elementary level. So still work in, work in progress. It's going to definitely come back, and it may, probably wind up with modifications in, in the policy, I would imagine. The other topic was elementary report cards, which Amy had four second, four, four minutes, and she said, we are going, we are going to take a very serious look and reassess how we do report cards for the elementary kids. So there wasn't time for any, any details on that. It sounds like they're going to be working on that over the summer, right?
Administration will start talking about it over summer to collect samples for the, for teachers.
Yeah, so that's, that's work that's, that's ongoing, so. I think that was it. I did that because Candace was, had to get ready for the Bronx Zoo. Field tripping. Uh, let's see. Board comments, board comments. Any comments?
Don't forget to vote on Thursday.
Yeah, I have a. Can we?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
On that comment, can we, I know we can't tell people how to vote, but we can get people, remind people to get out to vote, right?
You can tell them what the vote is for?
I, yeah, I'm, at this point cautious to even, I wouldn't send.
I wouldn't.
Anything out from our office.
Right.
What we do is we will talk with our administrators, talk with the PTAs, and get the Facebook pages going, and all of the above. So, but we, we cannot kind of do anything, basically.
Yeah.
Can't even say to send out the date, time, and date and time.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't even do it.
Slippery slope.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With the, and that legislation got tighter about two or three years ago.
Yep.
Yeah.
Basically, you can just say there's a vote on Thursday.
Anyone listening, please tell others to get out and vote, please.
Yeah.
My other comment was what Linda brought up about the, the cost per.
Yes.
Brown, Brown.
Yes.
Yeah. I thought we had talked about, when we were looking at that, we had talked about, we don't need that because we have the state insurance plan.
I remember the same conversation.
So I'm a little confused why that's still.
I'll search some information.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, anything else? No? Okay, that takes care of that. Public comment. Anybody like to address the board on any matter? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Future agenda, did you have something?
Yeah, I actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I'm wondering, since we've had all this discussion about data, et cetera, and we had a little bit of discussion about world language tonight, we, since we instituted that program, we have not had anybody speak to us about how it's going, whether we've done any surveys with parents, with kids. I mean, if, I mean, I mean, in theory, we're against cutting it, but I'd still like to know what's going on.
Yeah, we hear what's going on.
That might be helpful for our decision-making process.
Okay. All right. Good. Any other future agenda?
Good, yeah, good suggestion.
Okay, public comment. Diane?
Diane Swan, Southern Road Teacher Road. I wanted to talk about the pay-to-play for sports. As a former coach here at East Lime High School, I coached field hockey. I forgot for how many years I, my last season was 2004. I do not think that you should be combining freshman and sophomore sports. It is, if you look at the numbers, and I can't speak to tennis or some of the ones that I didn't coach, but when I did coach field hockey, I carried 54 players. I had enough players one year to actually have a freshman team, but nobody else had a field hockey program to play my freshman team. So the number of uniforms I had that year, or for many years, I carried that many students. And the reason why is because athletics is an avenue to get children, well, young adults, to collaborate and have discourse and feel like they're part of something right from the get-go. When you have fall sports and you include freshmen in them, you open up an opportunity for them to develop those friendships prior to the school year starting, which I think is a pivotal point when you're moving from eighth grade to freshman year. With that said, I'm probably going to open Pandora's box here, but I'm okay with that. I do think that we should look at the pay-to-play option. And the reason why I say that is because any parent who's had children go through East Lime or any school district, you will know up until the point you get to high school, you pay to play. I paid for East Lime youth basketball. I paid for lacrosse. I paid for gymnastics. I paid for all of these different things, and this year it's a deal, well, for the last three years it's been a deal because I don't have to pay for a hotel room. I don't have to pay for, you know, lunches or dinners when we're out and about. All that has been taken off the table. Now, I'm not saying that we absorb the, the brunt of what's happening as far as, you know, the $250,000 cut, but I think there's some leeway there. In addition to that, I think that we really need to consider as far as what's happening with some of these players that are on these, you know, swing sports, as far as you get to play freshman, you get to play JV. You get to play JV, you get to play varsity. I think we do a disservice to our students, athletes, in doing that, because if you look at the number of hours they are actually included in practice or games, it's, it's enormous. And I can speak as a parent firsthand whose child has done that in two different sports. It takes its toll, and they don't want to let the team down, they don't want to let their coaches down, but they end up letting themselves down because something has to give. So when you look at the amount of hours that they spend on the field, you can't discount the academics. Academics should be the priority at all times, and we have to be very mindful of that. And, you know, in our cognitive awareness moving forward, really take an in-depth look as far as what it is that we're asking of our student athletes. I'm a proponent of athletics, clubs, sports, drama, anything where you can get the children to be able to enrich them outside of the academic day, absolutely. But with that said, there needs to be a balance between what teachers are asking of their students and what is the social-emotional piece that goes with, making sure that we're looking at the overall child. So with that said, again, I think you really should take a closer look at the pay-to-play. I think there's avenues that, again, we can set up scholarships. There's different things. I mean, not to speak for any one organization, but all these years that I paid into youth basketball, or when she played lacrosse for a short time, or baseball, my. I think there's avenues that, again, we can set up scholarships, there's different things, I mean, not to speak for any one organization, but all these years that I paid into youth basketball, or when she played lacrosse for a short time, or baseball, my son, you know, regardless of what it is, maybe some of these organizations can provide scholarships moving forward, because a lot of them are in the red. As a founding member of the Southeastern Youth Field Hockey Club, we're not so quite, you know, in the red, red, I mean, being able to, in the black, sorry, not the red, in the black. So moving forward, you know, we have done a great job as far as introducing a whole new generation of youth to field hockey to keep that going. It really would sadden me to see you cut any sport unless the numbers weren't there, but again, back in the day, when I came to the high school, I could not play soccer, even though I played with the boys in the middle school, but I wasn't allowed to actually play on a competitive team with them, I got to be the manager. When we got to high school, there wasn't a soccer team, so I went to field hockey, so, and that worked out for me. But again, I really think you really need to take a close, close look at that, you'd be surprised at the number of parents that would be willing to pay, that are able to pay moving forward. And, you know, I supported this before kids, but when my nephew played ice hockey, that bill is a hefty bill. So, you know, again, you go to your relatives and you basically ask them for donations, early Christmas presents, birthday presents for years, so it's expensive, but you find a way to make it work, especially if your child's passionate about it, and it is really about the child's overall well-being, so, my two cents.
Good, thank you. Good. Somebody else want to address it?
Hi, Tristan Laurie, ten Caves and Drive. So I just wanted to have a slight reaction to the data discussion that was brought up tonight. Definitely understand that it was only nine hours of ballpark, or eight hours of work, and hope that my feedback is not insulting, you guys have probably already considered a lot of this, but just in case, I wanted to exercise a little bit of word of caution. Lots of data can be good, the data can be misused and abused and misinterpreted more often than it can be looked at correctly. So I know there's always a lot of confusion between causation and correlation, it's all too easy to find an incident where a child was maybe not performing as well, or having some behavioral issues, and then go back and look at a slew of data and then say, oh, there we go, the signs were there the whole time. You can pick out all these trends and bits of, of data, it does not necessarily mean that they're indicative of a root cause, so I would just exercise some caution there, I don't know if this is being used as a predictive or preventative measure, or whether it's just to observe trends. Data is good, can be very good, but it, you know, garbage in, garbage out, if people aren't putting it in carefully and systematically, and you guys don't have a very standardized way of doing this, it can go haywire. You know, for instance, one teacher could be very gung-ho about it and be putting more and more data in, and you're getting slews of information from them, and then others can be putting in the bare minimum and choosing not to report certain things, and so it can, it could skew your reporting on the student population. And one thing that, that, you know, I see all the good sides that can come out of this, the one thing that had me concerned a little bit is a longstanding record over many grades where behavioral problems follow kids. Everybody knows we go through stages, kids go through issue, you know, a lot of issues in their lives developmentally, they may have a lot of trouble early on, and they have a huge breakthrough, and they come to school, you know, seventh grade year, and they're totally different. And the last thing I would want is for a teacher to start looking at things and say, take a look at the last six years of their track record, immediately have a first impression that puts them on edge about a student that causes them to treat them differently. So I think that the access to that data, the professionalism with which it's handled, that the caution, care, and just making sure that there's no issues with privacy is a, is a big one. I think it can be a great program, I think there's a lot of good that can come out of it, but I think we need to be very careful about what we consider going in, what is an actual indicator or an independent variable going into this equation, and what is really just, you know, it might be easy to, to record and write down, but it's really not necessarily indicative of any driving trends, so. Anyway, I don't mean to be overly critical and harsh, but I really.
Well said.
Please exercise a little bit of caution there. And the other thing too, which I was kind of surprised about, and I, Eric brought up about the, can we advocate to come out for this referendum, so, been trying to follow along pretty carefully here, but I even actually had a difficult time realizing the referendum was this, this Thursday, and I can't find any indication of it on the Eastlime Town Hall website, and I, I can't find anything. The, the closest thing I found was a, a report in the day on the sixth, so I was kind of surprised, and it could be me, my people food maybe.
I saw a sandwich board up recent somewhere, but that's, that's about it, yes, yes.
Broadcast and advocate, make everything publicly available, and I can't find much evidence other than a day article from the sixth. I'm surprised now. I know if we can correct for that?
Cautious as well.
You can send out messages.
Yeah, please, that's where we, that's where we ask for your help. Yeah, exactly.
Hello, Kyle Doughton, five Rockwell, I spoke at the meeting the other night for the budget to try to get the money put back, or not take as much away. So I felt kind of important to come speak here as well, and I, my dad started a business while he was in Eastlime High School, I now run that, and my mom grew up as a teacher. And growing up, we always joked around about her in her perfect teacher world, and so she would go and was more concerned about the students, didn't have to worry about the outside world, because it was all about putting that effort into the kids. My dad's job, very different, running a business and having to deal with the customers and all the stuff that went on, and the data and all that. And I'm going to come back to this, so I apologize, and I'm trying to make this as quick as possible, but about a year ago, Eric brought up when all the principals were going over data, and they said how great our schools were. And Eric said that, that this is all great, and we love to hear it, but where do we go from here? What can we do to improve? And my question is, as a business major, on a supply and demand curve, there's an ideal point where we're putting the right amount of effort in and getting the right amount of effort out. And I'm wondering if we're exceeding that now, where we're putting too much cost in and not getting as much out for the cost that we're putting in, especially when it comes to technology. And the other key thing that I always look at when I'm in business is opportunity cost, and unfortunately, they're not always financial, sometimes they're time, positions, things like that. And whenever I make a decision, I try to look at it, I'm not the best at it, because I'd be a different business, but I work on real skinny margins, and I deal with POS systems, and lots of data, and lots of sales data as well as inventory data, and it's extremely costly to maintain a POS system, a big one. I have a lot of upgrades, and every time the software company tells me I have to upgrade, I spend a lot of money on it. So these are some of my questions going forward, as we put money into things like data mining and software companies, and what are our contracts with them, and how's that going to affect us going forward? And what's the opportunity cost of taking these teachers out of the classroom and putting, like, having them have to learn this stuff, learn the new curriculum, and the cost associated with them putting this data in? And I know firsthand that it is a lot on the teachers, to get all this data that they're not used to collecting and then trying to put it into this. And are we going to get what we need out? Because when we did the building remodel, everybody kept coming to the meetings, and including the board members, saying that these teachers could teach in a barn, and we would get great results because we had great teachers. So there's got to be a happy medium between putting all this money into technology, because when we do this, we've had to buy, and I'm making correlations, but we've purchased laptops, we've changed, she kept bringing up a lady's named Stacy, that got moved from one position to another to help this. Those are all costs associated with this data, and I think that throughout the entire budget, there's probably things that we're making decisions on that we could take that money and put it back into the classroom, into crayons for just a basic example. And are there ways we can save some costs on some things that throughout the year we're making decisions on, but we're not putting all the costs associated with it and making those decisions? And I'm not saying you're going to save it overnight, but can we look at the budget going forward and look at some of the things that we spend money on, and are there a lot of costs associated with things, and are we really getting the return on investment? Like, and again, I'm just using examples, but the smart boards in elementary schools, do they have to have them? When I was at UConn, they took smart boards out of classrooms and put chalkboards back in because they thought the kids learned better by a teacher writing on the board. So it just, like, little things like that, because we're constantly replacing them in the elementary schools, I know, because they fail, and it's technology, and you got to put a new one in. Well, what's that cost versus materials, books, things like that? And so I guess in conclusion, it's just, in business, I sometimes am looking for growth, and then other times I'm looking for profitability. Maybe we should be looking more for profitability and not growing all the time, and I'm, if you don't grow, you get stale, so there's that happy medium between the two. And lastly, just on another note, because it came up tonight, was the pay-for-play thing. I second everything that was said tonight about the fact that I'm constantly paying for the kids to play in sports, and by the time they get to high school, I don't see why a minimal fee shouldn't be associated. And if you're really concerned about kids joining into sports, maybe make it only for varsity, because by the time kids play freshman or JV, that's their experience, and if they really want to pursue it, they're going to play varsity. And varsity's where there's more expenses incurred, because there's more games, there's more travel, stuff like that, because I'm all for the kids being able to afford to join.
Thank you very much. Any else? Twelve dollars and fifty cents.
I won't take a lot of time, but this is my last Board of Education meeting. I'm like one forty-five, and I am not going to be sad, that I am not going to be awake this long at any given Monday night.
You have to come to the tenth.
Uh, no, I don't.
I'd say she's made her mind up.
I appreciate it. My relief in, as an association president, is Scott Mahon, who is a graduate, as well as a high school teacher here, but I want to say I have really appreciated working with the Board of Education, working with the administration, both at Central Office and in all the buildings, and of course, representing our fine teachers who really do the work of schools. And I guess I would echo some of the things that we just heard, as you look to make decisions, I think that some things that you might consider is that a lot of top-down doesn't work as well as talking to the people who are actually in front of the kids. The teachers, the paraeducators, and building principals could use a little more autonomy, perhaps, there's maybe a little bit too much of this, and you keep telling me what to do, and I'll just do what you tell me to do. So I would hate to foreshadow, foreshorten any of the excitement that teachers bring to this and any of the initiative, so I just, just keep that in the back of your mind as you think of things, but.
Thank you, Linda. Anybody else want to address the board? No, okay. We do have a need for an executive session, so we will take a brief recess to go back into executive sessions for purposes of contract negotiation.